Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the Clerk, Ms. Cuddy, please call the roll to establish a quorum?
You have Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Vice Mayor Hanson, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Schneer, and Mayor Steinberg.
Here. All right, a quorum is present for tonight's evening. Let's all rise. Ask Councilmember Carr to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Attorney, any reports out of closed session?
No.
Okay, very, very good. We have two special presentations today. One of them is recognizing Street Soccer USA for their work in the community. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Schneer.
They're not quite here yet.
They're not quite here yet. Okay, then, then let us go to presentation number two. And that is recognizing Norm Polikar and his retirement as principal from Genevieve Didion School and many other assignments within the Sac City, leadership assignments within the Sac City School District. I turn it over to Councilmember Jennings to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. This is my opportunity to recognize a true leader in the city of Sacramento. He is joined here with us with his wife, Kristy, and his daughter, Lindsay, and also his music teacher, Edelrick Chambers. She's in the audience as well with her, with her baby, her granddaughter. So, and I'm sure there are others that are out there as well. But I want to recognize Norm Polikar for his dedicated 33 years of leadership in service for the Sacramento City Unified School District. When I talk about 33 years, I'm not just talking about 33 years. I'm talking about 33 years of leadership, 33 years of giving back, 33 years of showing up every single day and being an example and a leader for all those kids, for all the parents, for all the teachers, and all the other administrators. Thirty-three years of serving his community and making a difference by walking through the doors and leaving a tremendous impact to every single person that he came in contact with. He started his career at Willsey Woods, where he flourished. And obviously, he started as a teacher, so he had done that job, and they recognized his talents as a teacher, and they promoted him to an administrator. They recognized the talents that he showed, his compassion for students, his willingness to learn and to implement difficult administrative duties as they became second nature. He spent the last 21 years of his career at Genevieve Didion Elementary School as their principal. And I know firsthand, because my kids went to that school, and I can speak firsthand about the powerful foundation that he and the teachers gave my kids as they continued to higher education in high school and in college and on to graduate degrees. He not only took my kids and others to high heights, he took Genevieve Didion to become a California distinguished school and awarded Sacramento City Unified School District exemplary award under his leadership. So I want to give him this resolution, and now that it be resolved by the mayor and the City Council of the city of Sacramento, that we do hereby recognize Norm Polikar and congratulate him on his retirement of 33 years of service in the Sacramento City Unified School District. Please join me in giving him a round of applause.
Wow. I'd like to thank everyone involved in this very, very special recognition, especially Councilman Jennings, who has always been a great supporter of education and youth development and a man I'm very, very proud to call my friend. With respect to the work I did, I can only say that it was truly a labor of love. I never lost sight of the fact that to work directly with young people for 33 years was an incredible, great privilege. I can say too, that any success I experienced were made possible by my really good luck in having incredible colleagues, both teachers and support staff. One of my very fondest colleagues, Ms. Edelrick Chambers, is here, the heart and soul of Didion for longer than I was there. And also, strong, caring, involved parents, as you were, Mr. Jennings. And last but not least, wonderful kids. I did my best because that's what our kids deserve. I will remember this honor as the final highlight of my career. Thank you all very, very much.
Norm, don't, wait, wait, don't leave yet, don't leave yet, not yet. Hold on, you've got Councilmember Schneer who wants to say a word, and I know I want to say a word as well.
Yeah, thanks. Just thinking back on my school board days, and Didion and Norm, you being the envy of most people in the district, who just look to your school as a model of what could be. And all the work we did and the joint use that we did when we, when we built the gymnasium there, that was just a model project also for how the city and the school district and the community could cooperate on something. So I just want to say congratulations. I hope you enjoy and be well.
Thank you, Jay.
I just want to add, a true public servant. I met Norm when I was a City Council member back in the day in Councilmember Guerra's current seat when you were principal at Willsey Wood. And that was a tough era and a hard place. And you just shined. And you cared about, I always remember, you cared about every kid. That's what I remember. And, I mean, genuinely. And knew people by name and, you know, it just, 33 years, community's grateful to you, Norm.
Thank you, Norm. I appreciate it.
And your family. So thank you, thank you all very much, and congratulations. Please, you want me to join? Okay, thank you. (applause)
I'll get there. Come on, everybody.
All right.
I think the family should be in the picture.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you want to use her phone? No, we're good. Okay.
Congratulations. I think this is mine. Thank you, sir.
All righty. Very good. Recognizing now Street Soccer USA for their work in the community. See, Lisa is here, and I turn it over to Councilman Schneer.
Great. Where did Lisa go? Why don't you guys come on up? Come on up. So, I'd like to do this a little bit differently. Lisa, I know you have a little three-minute presentation you'd like to do, so why don't we go ahead and, if you, if you want to tell us that you can do this much better than I, if you want to tell us a little bit about what Street Soccer USA is about, and we'll look at the presentation and then just say a couple words after that.
Yeah, sure. Thank you for having me. Street Soccer USA is a national nonprofit organization essentially using soccer to fight poverty and homelessness and empower individuals through the game. In 2008, Street Soccer USA started a national event that began in Washington, D.C., and it basically united like 14 to 16 different soccer teams around the country who were made up of formerly homeless and homeless individuals who had been connected to their social services in their respective cities. And through team and support and accountability and goal-setting, they would, you know, their goal would be to practice and practice until they could go to this event annually. And we found that a lot of the adults, they were all adults, but whether they were dealing with drug addiction, mental health, just poverty and like lack of support, through playing on the teams, they started to have really positive outcomes just because they had someone to look forward to, coaches to talk to, they learned some goal-setting skills. But then this event became a celebration to really unify the country's homelessness success stories, but one kind of proved that homelessness does not have to be hopelessness. And then use it as a platform of awareness for the conditions, then also celebrate individuals who were finding a way out of homelessness. And they did it through soccer. The event has been held in cities like Washington, D.C., New York Times Square, San Francisco Union Square, Philadelphia at the Art Museum steps. And then this year, we celebrate the 10th year that the tournament has been in play, and Sacramento will be hosting it in Old Sacramento this weekend. So we'll be starting Friday. We'll be welcoming 14 different cities, about 150 athletes from around the country who have all overcome homelessness, and we'll be housing them and feeding them and have a three-day soccer tournament to, you know, reinforce the community and bring them together, but also demonstrate that we're on these folks' side and hopefully provide a lot of hope and inspiration for the people who maybe don't know how to feel about homelessness. Or maybe they don't know that it's something that can be overcome. But we'll basically transform Old Sacramento's waterfront into like a soccer mecca for a few days. We'll have some corporate tournaments, we'll have some community teams playing alongside and simultaneously our homeless adults, which, and when they're all in uniforms, it's really hard to tell who's who. So we hope we can break down some barriers and have, have some fun, but also really celebrate these folks' lives and the fact that, you know, again, homelessness does not have to be hopelessness. So thank you all for the support that you've given us thus far, but we're super excited about it. And we just found out that Romania's homeless street soccer team will be coming as well. So that should be pretty exciting.
Great. So do you want to show us the video?
Oh, yeah, sorry. So this is-
It's Saturday and Sunday, by the way?
Um, Friday, we'll have opening ceremonies at noon at the Capitol, and everybody's welcome to attend. We'll kick it off, then we'll parade down Capitol Mall into Old Sacramento and start the games about 1:30. And then we'll have games Saturday from 9:00 to 6:00 p.m., Sunday from 9:00 to 2:00, and the awards Sunday will be about between 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon. This is what we hope Old Sac will look like, starting Thursday. And Sacramento's had a women's team for the last eight years, and this is when they won Philadelphia. This year, we have six women on our team, who throughout the year, we've arrived at like 100% employment for those women, which is exciting. This is the flyer for the opening ceremony. And then this is the flyer for the event. It's free to attend, free to watch, so you can come cheer on the men's and women's program from Sacramento or any other cities that are attending. But we're very excited to be having it here.
So just, just a couple things, and we have a resolution for you. So we've been working together three years?
I think three, yeah.
And, and what Lisa and Street Soccer USA has done is, in addition to working with homeless women, they're also working with youth. And so we have been working with them in Oak Park, where they've run a lot of tournaments for us. And the very cool thing about this is it's not just about soccer, it's about leadership skills, it's about healthy eating, all kinds of things that we really want our young people to embrace. And so, you know, they have a great board here, they really found a home, I believe, in Sacramento, and lots of support, but they could always use more support. If anybody needs to make a donation someplace, they probably accept that.
Yeah.
And I'm just sorry, I'm out of town this weekend, I would love to come, but I hope people will make their way back down to Old Sac and take a look and, and say hello, because these are folks who have really overcome a lot. I want to just read a couple of data points, which I think are important. Currently, 90% of Street Soccer USA's participants who previously struggled with substance abuse are maintaining sobriety. So that's just a fabulous piece of information. Eighty-four percent are now employed and 91% have secured permanent housing. So beyond everything else, moving folks out of homelessness into employment, into permanent housing, you guys are doing great work in the community, and it's very much appreciated. So with that, I have a resolution. I think Mr. Hanson wants to speak as well.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Lisa, you and your team, your board have been a huge inspiration. I've seen the work you're doing in the community with our youth, with people who are homeless or formerly homeless, people trying to change their life for the better. And I can't think of anything more important than celebrating you here today and hoping that the National Cup is a huge success. So keep up the great work.
And stays in Sacramento.
And stays in Sacramento.
Yeah.
And that you teach Jay how to score a few points.
Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa.
How's your footwork, Mayor?
Terrific. Thank you very much, Councilman Schneer.
Thank you.
Welcome. Let's go to the consent calendar. Are there items that members want to pull from the consent calendar or discuss? Move approval, seconded by, seconded by Councilman Harris. We do have four members of the public who want to testify on one or, one or more items.
So the first speaker is Mac Worthy, and item number two, following Mr. Worthy on item 10, is James Fago-Clark, Robert Copeland, and David Andre.
Good afternoon, panel. We're back at the same question for several months I've asked. When you say investments, we only have Mac Worthy ask you questions about investment. Where is the business strategy of the community? Where is the business strategy that you send out to the community? What is you invested in, and what is the return? And the difference that you tried to run by me other weekend, deposit and investment is two different categories than an accounting. You're lying to the people. We should have a resolution that anything that you deposit into a bank, that dividend must be part of the deficit. You can, should not be able to utilize that, a lie to the public, never know anything about it, because you don't have that education in the city to trace that down. And it's simple, people. All you have to do is fill out information, because it's a nonprofit organization. You request that by the watchdog, which is IRS now, and they will show you directly what came in. And then you come back and you file a petition of what was it spent on. That's how you do, because this city have invested in a pavilion once for $400,000 and it failed through. And somebody grabbed it and the government never got their hands on who was the person that you gave $400,000 to for a pavilion in this town. Wake up, be transparent with the people that aren't privileged for education in the business world. All this other stuff is garbage. The business world function this country, because it's, it's free enterprise, not socialism.
Next.
The next speaker is James Fago-Clark and Robert Copeland.
Hello, counsel. I'm glad to see that we're finally going to possibly hear about implementing the Pathways Program. I would really like to see a full breakdown of how this money is planning on being spent, like every penny of it, which, which companies are going to be getting how much, how they're spending that money. Make sure that it's not just going to a bunch of their CEOs instead of actually to helping people, because that seems to be a major problem with some of these nonprofits that I've seen being highlighted. Large CEO payments with not as much going down to the people that are supposed to be being helped. I really hope that that's taken account of when you decide who to fund for these services that you're going to be providing. I'd also like to know exactly when this is going to show up for discussion or vote, because it's on as a consent calendar item, so I'm assuming that means it's going to be coming up to be spoken about very soon. And it also brings me to some concerns about things besides this that'll help people in the meantime, especially with the federal ruling against the anti-camping ordinance, which last week you had a rebuttal through the grand jury snuck away on your consent calendar also, that you moved before presentations. So I would really like you to address that, as well as make sure that you're not continuing to criminalize people unconstitutionally. It's been deemed by the courts cruel and unusual punishment to arrest people for sleeping outdoors when there's not adequate shelter space available. And that includes not being able to force them into religious shelters separated from their families or their pets. The county's already said that they're not going to enforce theirs, you know, and they've been pretty adamant about wanting to in the past. I'm hoping that the city will like care about the Constitution and do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Copeland and then David Andre.
When this is fully implements, I'd like to see how many people are actually helped in housing. And I'd like to see a transparency on this, on any homeless issue or any other issue, because transparency is a key word. I mean, if you don't have transparency, then how can we trust you? How many people are getting services of what kind? How many, I'd like to say, housing, transitional, permanent housing, maybe mental health, if that's, or, or any kind of services. I could see how many are getting help on any category on homeless issues through this program. Thank you.
Thank you.
And David Andre is our last speaker on the consent.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council. I too would like to know more about this program. Since I've been coming to City Council for the last two administrations, I have seen waste when it comes to any mental health or homeless services program. I've seen like nothing happen. More people are on our streets. It's time to get rid of that. Stop worrying about fleecing the drunks and the tourists. Our last City Council meeting, we spent like hours in here talking about ways to extract money out of tourists, while our citizens and our people and our guests, human beings, are dying on the streets of Sacramento. So I would hope that we could start out with this Pathways to Health program to be transparent and that everybody can back it, and it's our most enlightened thought. Let's not make the same mistakes we made with Sacramento Steps Forward. Let's actually do something. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I know the Pathways to Health program consistently puts forward updated evaluation information about how many people have actually entered the program, how many people are sheltered, where they're sheltered. I think what I'd ask Ms. Halken to do is to share with the speakers, I know the latest version of this that I know is public, but that I received a copy of, just to share it with the speakers so that they know, and to make sure that we're disseminating that ongoing information as often as possible, as I know we were doing. But that would be terrific, if we could get that to you right away. You asked a good question, you deserve the answer. Okay? Very good. The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That passes eight to nothing. Before we move to the regular agenda beyond consent, I want to take a point of, I guess it's a point of privilege here, and I want to just take a moment to introduce our new fire chief here, Gary Loesch. Please stand, Gary. Gary is going to be, was sworn in on Monday, but the official, it's tomorrow, ceremony is tomorrow, I believe, 4:00. At where?
In this chamber.
In this chamber here. Invite you all to come to welcome our fire chief. We're really lucky to, to have him. Comes from the city of brotherly love, from Philadelphia, where he led a very fine fire department and was recruited heavily by a number of cities and, and chose Sacramento. And we're very happy about that and know that you are going to do a great job. And a thank you as well to Chris Conlin, who has served ably as the acting fire chief for a number of months. And finally, to Howard Chan, under our city charter, of course, the city manager is the one responsible for hiring the lead city officials, and once again, Howard made a great choice. And so we look forward, Chief Loesch, to getting to know you and to working with you and, and your energy and all of your good ideas here to take an already good department to the next level. Okay? Welcome, sir. All right, let's get now to item number 11. This is an ordinance removing 2812 S Street from the register of historic, historic buildings. Mr. Hanson, Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, because we don't have any speakers and because I believe it's a fairly straightforward issue, I'd like to waive the presentation, open and close the public hearing, and move the item.
I'll second.
I think that's fine, unless there's anything that our lead staff wants to add?
The matter has been put into the public media. There've been three news stories in the last couple of weeks on this.
Okay.
It's a quirk of history that a vacant lot was deemed historic. And so we are writing that unfortunate quirk, de-quirking.
I could, I could ask many questions, but I choose not to.
I am happy to second.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstain. That matter passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. File item 12, this is the cannabis distribution operating permit fees. Mr. Devlin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Joe Devlin, with your office of cannabis policy and enforcement. Before you this evening, with an item establishing fees for cannabis distribution permits, distribution is an essential business-to-business function. It is also responsible for tax, the collection, collection of taxation of state taxes and The item, again, before you tonight establishes the fees for the permit structure that was adopted in August of this year. Those fees range from $5,000 to $30,000. We currently have 27 applications for distribution permit fees. Some of those were applied for under the previous permit structure, and a number of those have, were applied for after August 8th and have been waiting for the establishing of these fees so they could apply in full. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Devlin. We have no public comment on this item. Mr. Guerra?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Want to go ahead and move the item. We had ample discussion at law and legislation and looked at how best to regulate these fees, and with that, glad to move the item. Open and close the public hearing and move the item.
All right. We have a motion from Councilmember Guerra, second from Councilmember Jennings. Carr? Well, anyway. All right. No public comment? All right. We have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Devlin. And I'm back. Good evening, again.
Item 13 is, will establish a cap, a limit on the number of non-storefront dispensaries within the southeast industrial area, also kind of common, more commonly referred to as the power and alliance area. As you know, non-storefront delivery is a relatively new permit type. Non-storefront delivery represents likely about half of the retail market, and we are only now beginning to capture this portion of that regulated market. To date, we have received a total of 78 non-storefront delivery applications, with 50 of those being in the southeast industrial area. Similar to cultivation, the southeast industrial area is home to a disproportionate amount of the non-storefront delivery applications. Out of what I would call perhaps an abundance of caution, staff is before you tonight with an ordinance that would limit the number of delivery companies to 46. This ordinance would be temporary in nature and expire at, in October of next year. Prior to the expiration of that ordinance, staff will return with an evaluation of the impacts of these businesses in the southeast industrial area, as well as an assessment of the delivery market. Establishing a healthy marketplace for legal delivery is important to combating the illicit market. This policy establishes a balance of ensuring market functionality while guarding against over-concentration. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
We have six people signed up to speak. Mr. Guerra, would you like to speak first?
Yeah, just first, you know, we, we had a lot of ample discussion here, and I think I want to thank staff for, for taking the time after law and ledge to get to a-
We have a motion from Councilmember Gera, a second from Councilmember Jennings. Carr.
All right. No public comment? All right. We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Devlin. And I'm back. Good evening again. Item 13 is, will establish a cap, a limit on the number of non-storefront dispensaries within the southeast industrial area, also kind of common, more commonly referred to as the power and alliance area. As you know, non-storefront delivery is a relatively new permit type. Non-storefront delivery represents likely about half of the retail market, and we are only now beginning to capture this portion of that regulated market. To date, we have received a total of 78 non-storefront delivery applications, with 50 of those being in the southeast industrial area. Similar to cultivation, the southeast industrial area is home to a disproportionate amount of the non-storefront delivery applications. Out of what I would call perhaps an abundance of caution, staff is before you tonight with an ordinance that would limit the number of delivery companies to 46. This ordinance would be temporary in nature and expire at, in October of next year. Prior to the expiration of that ordinance, staff will return with an evaluation of the impacts of these businesses in the southeast industrial area, as well as an assessment of the delivery market. Establishing a healthy marketplace for legal delivery is important to combating the illicit market. This policy establishes a balance of ensuring market functionality while guarding against over-concentration. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
We have six people signed up to speak. Mr. Gera, would you like to speak first?
Yeah, just first, you know, we had a lot of ample discussion here and I think I want to thank staff for taking the time after law and ledge to get to a resolution. I think Councilmember Harris had some concerns about making sure we had applicants who were in the pool to be accepted. And as we move forward in this, I want to make sure that that becomes a fundamental piece. But by and large, you know, this is one of those things where when we created a policy it affected one district. And I think we've gotten to a point here that staff's done a lot of good work with multiple partners to try to find a good place that doesn't say no to the industry, but sets a balancing point. And it's only a moratorium so that we can see how this evolves. And with that, I'll go ahead and move the item. And I think we're gonna, Councilmember Harris, if, given your concerns last time, we'll move the number to 50 to make sure that those who are in the process were included in there. So with that, I'll move the item with the change to the number 50 versus 46.
We have a motion. Second. And a second from Councilmember Shanier. Do you want to speak before the public? No? Okay. Let's take the public comment, Madam Clerk.
I have six speakers. The first is Matthew, then Tyler Bales, then Tracy Shaw, Kenny Sadler.
My name is Matthew Basquale. I'm a business owner of several cannabis businesses. One of the things I think you guys are forgetting is the equity program. The reason all these businesses are moving over the area, and I know, we've talked to you, Eric, is it's the only space available. And while that's okay for everyone who's applied and the 50 that are in, you're kind of limiting the areas that people who are applying for the equity program, they don't have any access to like in the program, the core program that you guys are building for that, and limiting them to really ridiculous expensive areas. That is something that I would like you guys to kind of open up. And when you guys kind of choose the right person for the core program and the right RFP, that you guys kind of include that and make the exception for the equity program. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Tyler Bales, then Tracy Shaw.
Good evening, members of the committee and the council. Appreciate all your time and your energy. I had a different speech. Just want to say thank you for taking the applications into consideration that were in your queue. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bales. Ms. Shaw.
Following Ms. Shaw is Kenny Sadler, then Jackie McGowan, and then Katie Maple.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Hanson and members of city council. I'm Tracy Shaw, Executive Director for Power and Alliance. And I'd like to thank city staff for bringing this item forward tonight. As mentioned, District 6 is home to over 65% of the city's cultivation locations. And we have been working diligently to integrate these, this new industry into the area. We are forming a cannabis cohort to serve as both a platform as well as a connector. With delivery, we support the city's recommendation to take a similar approach in terms of delivery. We have over 65% of the applications in one small geographical area. And we think that since this is a citywide ordinance, that it would be better served if this, if there was additional coverage for patients and recreational users outside of District 6. And it would also help reduce the amount of VMTs for better TOD-type applications for these facilities to be closer to the neighborhoods in which they operate. Our adjacent neighborhood associations wholeheartedly support this. And using the words of Ms. Fay Kennedy of the Southeastern Village Neighborhood Association, "Share the love." It's important that this be something that those neighborhoods that are adjacent to the industrial district not bear the entire burden for a citywide ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Kenny Sadler, then Jackie McGowan, and Katie Maple.
Welcome, Mr. Sadler.
Good evening, city council. Thank you. I'm Kenny Sadler, Vice President of Economic Development with the California Urban Partnership. And we oppose the proposal to place a moratorium on delivery services in District 6, not because we don't understand the constituents in that district and their heart and their feelings about oversaturation. We actually are not opposed to a moratorium necessarily. We just are really, really looking out for the core applicants who are going to be applying for social equity here in the near future. And we want to protect what we have fought so hard to establish here recently. And the fact of the matter is, this type of business, non-storefront delivery, is, it represents the lowest barrier to entry. And this is what this group of people, the majority of them, not all of them, but the majority of them are focused on. And if, if we take away any opportunity for them to enter into that kind of a business, we, by definition, we handicap the program that we've all worked very hard for. And so we want to say that we support, you know, Fay Kennedy. I've had great conversations with her and Tracy Shaw, and we empathize with them and we understand where they're coming from. But we have a group of people who are brimming and chomping at the bit to start businesses that we have promised them that they could, that they could start. And if we now come at them and say, hey, no, we got to hold off on this and try to work to reverse it. So we want to, we want to propose that do the, do the moratorium, but can you lift it for the core applicants? Can you be sensitive to the core applicants? Lift it at a time-specific date, lift it for them because time is critical in this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Sadler. Your time is complete.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jackie McGowan, then Katie Maple.
Good evening, council. My name is Jackie McGowan. I'm with K Street Consulting, representing around my way delivery and equity licensee out of Oakland. I've also sent a letter of opposition to you all today with the businesses Mirage Medicinals, the law offices of James Anthony, Hood Inc., and Cow Growers Association. Traffic seems to be the main concern regarding this agenda item, yet the problem has not thus far been properly assessed. The staff report states that the deliveries from dispensaries propose an average of three vehicles in their fleet, with each vehicle estimated to make 12 trips per day. But the same study on non-storefront delivery cars and trips was not conducted. These are two business models that need to be assessed separately. The first being the licensed dispensaries, the second being a standalone business or non-storefront delivery, which operates a model of picking up product in the morning and then driving around the greater Sacramento area, not returning until they either need to replenish their stock or once their shift has ended. Weed maps currently shows that there are three delivery services conducting business in District 6. This indicates that consumers do not reside in this district and that delivery services are actually operating a dynamic delivery model in other districts and cities. Hence, traffic concerns should be limited to brick-and-mortar deliveries and not lumped in with non-storefront delivery models. We are not asking that this decision not be made today, not be made. We're asking that this decision not be made today. We would like to see this item postponed until an impact study can be conducted on how this decision will affect small businesses, especially taking into consideration how this will impact the unveiled core equity program. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker on item 13 is Katie Maple.
Hi. Good evening, mayor and members of the council. My name is Katie Maple, and I'm here on behalf of the California Cannabis Couriers Association, which represents cannabis delivery businesses in Sacramento. We are strongly opposed to the proposed cap on delivery in District 6 because we believe it will limit who can participate in this newly regulated market. It is ill-timed with the rollout of state regulations and doesn't appear to be rooted in tangible data. Because of long-term planning decisions made by the city of Sacramento, commercial and industrial zones have been concentrated over time in District 6. Also, because of recent decisions by this body, cannabis businesses can only locate in these, in these zones and cannot be within certain distances of schools, parks, and residential areas, which has severely limited the availability of properties. In effect, the creation of what we're calling undue concentration was done through this process and not by the choice of business owners. And yet now they are the ones who are being penalized. There is no data to show that there is anything to fear by having more cannabis businesses located in an area. And in fact, data from Colorado and Oakland suggests that they can improve the safety of neighborhoods with proper security and investment. Additionally, many businesses have been waiting patiently for the state regulations to be finalized before finding property. And now those who have chosen this path will be hard-pressed to find a location in the city as every surrounding area has a complete ban in place. Lastly, this body recently voted to create an equity program for the city. With delivery being the lowest barrier to entry in the industry, it is unlikely those individuals will find a property they can start a business out of. We respectfully request that council waits to institute a cap and at least until the state regulations are in place and the equity program is up and running. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more speakers on this item.
Okay. We do have, I know there's been a motion and a second on the item while I was out of the room. We do have council members who are up to speak. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you very much, mayor. When this item came to law and legislation, we discussed the ramifications of slowing down the application process for delivery-only dispensaries. I asked Mr. Devlin how long it would actually take to work through 46 or 50 applications. And the best guess is it'll probably take about a year. So in a sense, this does no harm, in my opinion. It will take a while to work through the applications. It'll give some peace of mind to the people in the southeast district. We said from the get-go, as we started to regulate the cannabis industry, that we were going to move cautiously and try to understand the effects of our decisions. And I think this shows that we're continuing to move on that path. And in the next year, we will understand an awful lot more about the industry and the application process. So I'm in support.
Very good. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, mayor. Joe, let me ask you a question. Some of the speakers have talked about the impact on the core participants. How does this impact the core participants?
Well, certainly, it certainly has the potential to. The bulk of the, I guess, land that is properly zoned for this use is within the southeast industrial area. However, there are other parts, the rest of the city does have areas of light manufacturing and other sorts of properly zoned property. It might create, the rule being impact, I couldn't tell you exactly how much, but there are other parts of the city that will remain open.
The core participants haven't completed the program at this point. Am I right?
Correct. The, that RFP is currently out and we're going to be trying to get that program up and running as quickly as possible.
And it's going to take them a year after they get their application in before they can get a license.
So the entirety of the process is fairly complicated. One, there's a conditional use permit that's required. And then subsequent to that, there's the obtaining of a building permit, any necessary build-outs, then, and then finally, the review and approval of the business operating permit. And those things strung together, because they can't all be done simultaneously, does create a bit of a lead time with cultivation. And we've seen that it's been and will be in excess of a year in some, in some certain cases.
And how long is this moratorium for?
12 months.
12 months. So they will be able to go through, the core participants will be able to go through the process without delay. Takes them a year to get the license and everything in place. We lift the moratorium after 12 months.
We certainly, we will be back before council with a report on what those impacts have been and the kind of overall, I guess, health of the market in addition to the impacts of the business. But again, there are other parts of the city that do have properly zoned.
They could go to other districts as well.
Correct.
Will I have to invoke the Alan Warren Rule? We're not going to force dispensaries or any other deliveries in a district that the council member objects to, so I will support it.
Very much. Councilmember Gedda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank my colleagues for, you know, giving some deference to the district here. You know, Ms. Kennedy, who, and a lot of the folks who live in Glen Elder and Southeast Village and South Area, many of them have come up to me and talked to me about this subject matter. And they have not said, you know, they have not said, no, keep it out of here or whatnot. Some of them don't like the fact that cannabis has become a legal product in California. But that's here nor there. The voters have said that. You know, what Ms. Kennedy told me was, Eric, we're not saying no. We're just saying not all here. And I think what we've done here is a measured approach to say, let's see how the first 50 will turn out. How is this process moving? Bear in mind, we're a city that's venturing out on this and no one else around us. And I do want to, you know, bring up Mr. Sadler's point because he brings up a good point. How do we ensure that we have equity in, as this industry moves out? And in fact, you know, Councilmember Shanier and I have talked about, let's have a discussion specifically how we allow those core participants to participate in that. But first of all, we need to set what is a fair process to move forward. And for me, I look at what's the fairness for those who are living in that area? Yes, planning created that as an industrial area. But is it fair that folks in the South Area have to always be the ones who are impacted by landfills, by some of the emissions of the manufacturing, the gravel pits? They try to put an underground gas plant underneath the neighborhood? And then the excess of this product? I feel like this has been an approach that we've taken a measured way. And it is an entry point that has allowed more people of color and women to enter into this business. I do feel that within a year, we're going to be in a position with more data and allow folks to look at this moratorium with a more thoughtful eye rather than making it a rush to the industry. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I do appreciate every, the support of my colleagues on this limited moratorium to move the industry forward.
Thank you. Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question for Joe, and this is, I think it helps me gauge kind of where things are in this process. It's in reference to the NEXUS study. And just where are we with that NEXUS study? And then when do we anticipate receiving a, this comprehensive work of, of our consultants that will help us determine what some of these impacts will be?
Yep. Thank you, councilmember. I'm going to kindly look over to my attorney over here, who has most recently been directly involved in, and that had the most current information.
Good evening. Audrey L. Anderson, on behalf of the city attorney's office. The office is continuing to work on the NRP study and moving forward with the city manager's office at this point.
You speak up just a little. I'm sorry. I'm just having a hard time hearing. That's okay. I want to hear it.
I'm sorry about that. My office is continuing to work on the NEXUS study and working with the consultant. And we plan on moving forward with the city manager's office, but we don't really have a specific report to provide.
Yeah. Well, one of the concerns that I have is that this NEXUS study has been going on for, what, two years now or so, there and about. And we continually are advancing, you know, applicants and licensees and that kind of thing. And I know it's legal in the state, but we're moving forward with a structure whereby we don't know at this point what the impacts are. My concern is that some of these more vulnerable communities are being put in a situation where they can't really defend themselves because they don't have the tools or the resources necessary. And so I am, I'm going to support the, I'm going to support the item tonight. But I think we have to really do a better job at getting to a conclusion with this NEXUS study so we could clearly identify what the intended impacts are. And then if we need to make adjustments, we make adjustments to our policy. If we don't, then fine. But we need to know what the NEXUS study says.
Yeah, I understand. Okay. I know that the manager, because we've had lots of conversations about this, is committed, and we're all committed, to getting a NEXUS study complete that allows the impacted neighborhoods to be able to get direct mitigation, a direct benefit from the tax revenues raised by the industry. That is a key piece of this. Look, this is an important item tonight, in my opinion, and worthy of support because what it, what it really signals, I hope, is that as we grow this industry, and we intend to, because it is legal and it's real business opportunity, especially for many communities that have been disadvantaged by the war on drugs over many years, that's what the core program is all about, this must be done in partnership with the neighborhoods. It must be. And if, and if the industry overruns or moves faster than the neighborhoods, it, no matter how far ahead those in the industry think they're getting, it ultimately will not succeed if it is not done in some form of partnership with the neighborhoods and the business community and the business corridors that are so essential to our, our city. So Councilman Gedda, I thank you for bringing this forward. I think it is worth. I think it is worthy, and without any harm, as Councilman Harris really pointed out, given how long it's going to take to evaluate the existing licenses and applications, and it's not a permanent action. It's something that we can and will revisit as appropriate. Right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. That measure passes on a unanimous vote. All right. We now move to discussion item fourteen, which does contain an action item, and item fifteen, which is the Measure U Community Advisory Committee. Without objection, I think what we will do is take these together, and then we can vote separately, but I don't think there's any reason why we can't discuss them together. And I know we have our economic development team coming up. Let me just begin by saying, this afternoon, we had a, I think, a very effective workshop on this issue, where we covered some of the items that we will be discussing tonight. But tonight's the night for action. I said earlier, I won't repeat all of the comments, but what we intend to do tonight, with the support of the council, is to begin implementing an important commitment to the people of Sacramento, that we invest our current and future taxpayer dollars in an intentional and impactful way to grow a high-wage, modern, and inclusive economy here in Sacramento. Even prior to the voters considering Measure U on November sixth, the community stakeholders, the City Manager's Office, and I are asking the council to approve three important policy directions this evening and continuing them next week. And one of them, they'll hear about tonight, is a robust accountability commission with more community members and more input than the original Measure U committee back in 2012. Number two, the beginning of a series of evaluation metrics that hold us as a city accountable to improving the economic condition of the city with a special focus on our neighborhoods and on disadvantaged communities. Third, next week, we intend to bring forward, and I'll talk a little bit more about this later, a resolution committing us to specific steps to continual improvement for the efficiency of city operations. Tonight is not an endpoint, everyone. This is not perfection here. I don't know if it's ever possible to attain it, but tonight is not the endpoint. It is the beginning of developing a series of accountability measures so that if we gain these additional resources, that the public is assured that we will directly invest them in building a modern, inclusive economy, and that, in fact, we follow through on our promises. And so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jasso and the team to go through. We're going to take items fourteen and fifteen together, and so pick them in whatever order that you like. Maybe we begin with the Framework for Inclusive Economic and Community Development, and if you can focus us specifically, not just on how we got here, which is important, but on the resolution itself and attachments, one A and one B, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. To start, this afternoon, we had a robust conversation about a multi-pronged approach to ensure that the city develops and implements a comprehensive economic and community development strategy that's inclusive, accountable, and measurable. To reiterate from this afternoon, the city and the community learned a number of troubling trends from Project Prosper outreach and the Brookings Report that present a call to action that all residents must participate in and benefit from economic activity if the city is indeed to grow and thrive in the years to come. As a reminder, as noted in the Project Prosper interim report, Project Prosper used a two-pronged iterative process to acquire broad community input. One set of activities involved the insights and advice of national, regional, and local economic experts focused on how metropolitan, city, or neighborhood economies succeed and fail. Another set of activities involved local residents and business people, exposing them to the theories and findings of the project's economic experts, and asking them to share local experiential knowledge about the current economic strengths and weaknesses of their neighborhood and city. And we are fortunate today to have kind of the prime mover, kind of the Project Prospect work, kind of Ms. Doreen Hackler here tonight as well. Thank her for the hard work. As a reminder, Project Prosper had three meetings across the city with extensive outreach, over three hundred participants, one-third of which had either never attended city public meetings or hadn't within the last year. We had a combined meeting with community and national experts with one hundred thirty participants, and this was followed by a number of topical subgroups formed around three capacities of people, business, place, to begin researching in more detail the issues associated with implementing the menu of options and program ideas that were discussed and voted on in the community meetings. We know that addressing the issues and opportunities identified will not only require the city commitment to a comprehensive economic and community development strategy, but more importantly, that one that is inclusive, accountable, and measurable. In July of just this past year, this council unanimously adopted a policy and resolution that established a series of principles intended to guide the city's actions and investments with the purpose of strengthening people, place, and business capacity in order to promote inclusive and equitable economic growth. Council also directed staff to report back recording how the city would develop and implement a comprehensive, inclusive, community, and economic development strategy. Tonight's report outlined some key principles and steps to develop such a strategy. We are asking council to adopt a multi-pronged framework that includes, one, a set of key inclusive guiding principles, two, quality life indicators, and three, a criteria and performance metric system. I would now like to turn this discussion over to my colleagues, Melissa Angianna and Leslie Fritsch, to further elaborate on the quality of life indicators and the metrics which we did, did not elaborate on during this afternoon's workshop.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Leslie Fritsch with your economic development group. Over the last few months, a working group consisting of Sierra Health Foundation, the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, the Mutual Assistance Network, which is a nonprofit community-based organization, and the Metro Chamber of Commerce, among others, used the framework that the council adopted in July, in the July resolution, and outlined initial benchmarks and indicators that the city could use when evaluating and measuring projects, programs, and policy decisions. A quality-of-life index included in the staff report before you tonight attempts to capture some broad expectations for community standards, kind of setting a set of values for what our community should look like. These indicators would be used to determine if our investments are really making a difference. The second part of the metric systems included are intended to measure and track disparities rather than present an absolute standard. The second part of the metric system, which is also included in your staff report, provides a process by which the city can benchmark and evaluates those programs and policy decisions. This metric system is reflective of the three components which were vetted with the community through the Project Prosper process. Once again, those are people, place, and business capacity, and included specific criteria, measurements, and thresholds for how the city can evaluate its investment decisions. For example, does the program or project increase the economic security and mobility of all the residents? Does it create pathways and opportunities for jobs? How can it focus and grow our industry clusters and create some high-paying jobs? Does it contribute to a healthy, vibrant, and opportunity-rich neighborhoods? And/or does it increase access to high-quality, affordable homes for all income levels? Combined, these two measurement tools ensure that we can be accountable and that any future commitment of city resources and projects and programs are consistent with our guiding principles and reflective of our community needs. These draft metric systems are just the start of a conversation of how the city might consider investments and what we would expect from making these level of investments. While the areas that have been identified thus far are important, they by no means capture all the elements we need to consider in making our investment decisions, and will likely include multiple and further discussion. Tonight, we look forward to your thoughts and considerations of what's needed to move this forward, and we'll certainly refine this work as we work with the community to develop a comprehensive, inclusive strategy.
So guided by the key guiding inclusive principles, city staff will work with and receive input from a range of community, neighborhood, education, housing, and business interests, develop a strategy that is actionable and based on priorities, resources, and metrics. Through this process, we will also refine the community indicators and performance metrics to ensure the entire package is meeting neighborhood and community needs and expectations. Once the strategy is approved by council, we envision two overall components of implementation. Number one, what action and investments the city decides to make. And number two, how will it go about making those decisions? Both components are anticipated to utilize the mentioned indicators and metric systems, as well as a wide-ranging community engagement process. Combined, these mechanisms provide the city with tools for vetting, evaluating, and prioritizing city investments and commitment of resources in future projects and programs. Tonight's actions would be but the first step in the development of comprehensive strategy that would commit the city's investment actions to be guided by principles of inclusion and equity. We know that now, more than ever, it's important that Sacramento embrace these principles and strengthen our capabilities to stimulate economic growth and quality of life for all our residents. That concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. So I just... Thank you for going through the detail here, which I appreciate. I just sort of want to summarize it myself, maybe for myself.
Mayor, can I ask a quick...
Yes, Jay.
So are you gonna... You wanted to do the two items together. Are we doing the... When are we doing the presentation?
That's true. Let's... You're right. Before we start talking among ourselves, let's talk about what passed law and ledge. This is item fifteen, and this is the Revised Accountability Commission, which I know there are a lot of people here for that, as well as the metrics piece. So why don't we go through that before we join the discussion? Thanks. What's that? The Community Advisory Committee Commission.
Committee. Good evening, Mayor and council. Leanie Milstein, Assistant City Manager. On July thirty-first, the council adopted an ordinance proposing a one-cent transactions in use tax to be placed on the November sixth ballot, which would replace the existing half-cent transaction in use tax expiring on March thirty-first, 2019. Section 3.27.150 of that ordinance calls for a citizens oversight committee, and at that meeting, several stakeholder groups raised concerns regarding the need for equitable investments of future funds and that there be transparency and accountability around processes and decisions regarding these investments. Since that time, staff has engaged in meetings with a variety of stakeholder groups to better understand their priorities and proposed categories of representation, as well as researched other cities' approaches to similar committees, all in an effort to ensure that the oversight committee is representative, includes required expertise, and is structured in a manner to effectively manage the work of the committee. On September eighteenth, the chair of the Law and Ledge Committee requested that staff prepare a proposal for consideration, and on September twenty-fifth, the Law and Legislation Committee received stakeholder testimony and asked staff to revise the proposed structure of the committee to reflect an appointment per council district and for the mayor, the addition of an appointee with experience with youth-focused adult education, public health, or environmental justice organizations, and the addition of language to ensure that the members of the committee making recommendations to council do not have ties to organizations for which they would be recommending funding. Exhibit A of the resolution included, as attachment three in the report to the council, starting on page twenty-three, reflects the feedback provided by the Law and Legislation Committee for council's consideration on a new Measure U Community Advisory Committee. Staff is recommending approval of the resolution, and I'm available for any questions you might have.
Again, Leanie, if you could just contrast... You said this, what is being proposed with the existing Measure U committee? The difference in terms...
Sure. Here's the makeup of the existing Measure U committee. So one member... There's five members: a certified public accountant with audit experience, one member, representative of business interests, a representative from a neighborhood organization, a representative of a bona fide taxpayer organization, and one member of the community at large. And we already knew that the very first member with the audit accountant is extraordinarily difficult to find somebody willing to serve on this committee, so we've had a challenge just filling that seat. And then I want to share our makeup of this committee. So it would be a member of an appointee by each council district and the mayor, and then if you look at E, little i, through six, are the areas where we're looking for some very explicit expertise, including a bona fide taxpayer organization, experience with housing, affordable housing, homelessness, or rental housing issues, a youth represented by someone ages sixteen through twenty-four, professional experience with business, economic development, or workforce development, professional experience with community trauma, mental health, or community-based crime reduction, and then the last one is the addition I just read, youth-focused adult education, public health, or environmental justice. So those are the categories. It would be a fifteen-member commission versus five members.
Jay has a question to clear.
Yeah, so not a question. There's actually a fundamental difference between the two committees that I think is extremely important. The Measure U Oversight Committee was really about how funds were spent, so it was really an after-the-fact committee. What the proposal that's come from the community... I'm sorry?
It's both, yeah.
Well, but that's... They kind of looked at the accounting on it and looked at where the monies were spent. This is really an advisory committee upfront that will help the council and the city both understand where and how to invest in the future, and making recommendations to the council about how to spend the money at the front end of the process. So I think with the expertises that we've required in the makeup of the committee, that's that fundamentally different function, I think, is critically important to our success over time.
Yeah, and certainly, it's a much greater emphasis in this revised and updated commission on the input on the front end, and that's definitely indisputable. The other thing, I just want to get clear on the record, and I will hear from some members of the public who've weighed in on this accountability commission, but can you talk a little bit about the input that we received and how we came to these categories?
Sure. Sure. We... Really, anybody who asked to talk about this was given an audience to have an opportunity to talk about this, because we wanted to make sure that we had kind of a wide variety of stakeholder input. So there were several groups that provided feedback to council on the thirty-first, so that's the first place that we started, and we had a meeting with that group. We met with folks from the chamber who asked, and then there were... We received subsequent feedback through that kind of iterative process of asking questions and getting their feedback at the Law and Legislation Committee. So it was really open to anybody who inquired about it, said, "What do you want to see?" And one of the things I did want to point out that I think is really important in what the folks are doing with the equitable economic development is this D here under section A and the scope of what we're asking this committee to do, because it's not just what the old committee did, and it's not just asking for recommendations and understanding council and community priorities, but it's also looking at the outcomes of the money that's spent, and looking at how we're spending those dollars, and are we getting what we thought we would get with those dollars? And then evaluating that on an ongoing basis to make sure that we're spending the money in the best way possible. So I think that's sort of another thing that mirrors what the work of what this group is trying to do, is to understand how those dollars are spent and the outcomes that we're achieving with it.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, so that covers both items. I know we have a lot of public testimony here. Why don't we hear from the public? Why don't we hear from the public? And then we'll turn it back to the council for questions and/or comments.
I have eight speakers on items fourteen and fifteen. The first is Macworthy, Latia Golar, and then Jade Nicole.
People, I see the same thing here when you say oversight, neighborhood. The same thing went on is now, is when redevelopment has come in, a patch. You don't have the education across the board, not kind of black, white, whatever they defer to be, to cope with what you're seeing, to ask you the right questions in economic development. People, you can't... Where you going with it? You're going down the... You're going down a tube. Where are those people in the neighborhood should have the education? These people could go, Jeffrey Berger is here in town, his daddy was Bill Berger. Bring an expert have develop, economic development in here, and let that person go through it, and then go to your people here, here we talk, that can relate to these people in the community, what is economic development? You ain't got no big-time job. You're talking about sales tax, you're talking about auditing, not one person but me coming in and talking about audit, not but one person but me coming in and talking about trust funds. It's not here, people. You blinding these folks that you gonna do this, you ain't gonna do a damn thing in economic development, but blow that money. And you know that. You're gonna blow that money, because you don't know what you're doing with that money. Look at the step to take. You go to the state, come back, and you don't want to tell the people how much interest they draw to when it's in deposit. You don't want to tell people how much your investments return, how is they gonna follow the dollar? They can't do it, people. They don't have the expertise. I didn't have accounting and business experience of 44 years, I could not see either. Wake up, people. You insane. When we go to this thing is economics, and then we got a drug, you cannot make it off drug money. We want to see a drug test. When you talk about economics, then you drop the drug test. People, we want a drug test on people getting loaded behind a stunt wheel.
Worthy, thank you, Mr. Worthy. Our next speaker is Latia Golar, Jade Nicole, and then Kathy Rodriguez.
Hi, my name is Jade. I'm a local businesswoman and artist in downtown. I co-founded SAC Fashion District, Magnemopus Studio of the Stars, Jade Yoga Help Fight Poverty, and I'm a part of a leadership team for 60 magazines nationwide. I want to point out that businesswomen are being excluded from downtown, and by excluding us, you guys are missing out on the opportunity for an economic impact. The companies that I've built, they have a potential to bring in billions of dollars. I'm a part of a large network of business owners that are arts-related. I am faced with the decision of leaving District 4, and it's primarily because it's not inclusive for women business owners, and I want to make a difference for women and people with disabilities that are affected by poverty. I'd like to move our businesses to Del Paso Boulevard. I'm interested in bringing high-paying jobs in the technology industry, arts, media, clothing manufacturing, retail, administrative. I want to empower the women in your community, Alan Warren. I know your community, I was there seven years ago. I taught yoga at a local studio called Sacramento Pole Fitness. I know the women and the people in that community are hungry for change, and the network of business owners that I want to bring to your community. We all want to make a difference. It's not just about making money. We want to help people, we want to solve the poverty crisis and make all of your jobs easier. It starts with having a meeting with us, being open to our community and not excluding I'd love to be there. I've called and I've sent emails. When would you like to visit with us? The Del Paso part? Okay. And this is Latia, she's one of the fashion designers that we work with.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
How are you being excluded?
We have to leave Sacramento to earn an income. I live in low-income housing, I've never, never once earned $1 from downtown.
But you said that the businesses were excluding you from operating downtown or midtown? How are they doing that?
It's the good old boys' club, it's the whole structure in downtown. The men that run the community, they don't want to let women in. I'm being faced with leaving our office, because the men in power in our building were not happy with seeing a white woman do business with black men.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Golar?
Hello, my name is Latia Golar, and I have a company called American Uma, and I make dope-covered apparel. So basically, what I do is I make modest fashion cool for the new woman, you know? So we make dope-covered apparel. So I've been in Sacramento for 15 years. Sacramento has been really good for me, I love the city, I love the diversity. I came from Chicago, and I've been nothing but blessed since I've been here. I've been on every news station in Sacramento, I've been on the cover of the Sacramento Bee, and I really invested in the city during Sacramento Fashion Week. I represented Sacramento all over the country, and I recently just came back from New York Fashion Week, of which I've been presented with an opportunity to present in London, Paris, Dubai, Jakarta, Miami, and LA. So that's what I've brought to Sacramento, and I've built my network, was built from here. So the problem now is that I'm going into manufacturing, and I just had my first grandbaby, and now I have a decision to make of whether to stay here or leave. There's no manufacturing here. The truth is, is that the garment industry is the second-largest industry in the world with bringing in over $2.5 trillion globally, and we currently have a population here with a lot of immigrants who have a background in sewing and manufacturing, but unfortunately, we have to go outside of the city, go to places like LA. Currently, in Sacramento, it's a lot of schools that teach fashion design, but we don't have anything to keep us going and going to the next level. Detroit has implemented apprenticeship program, and they're bringing manufacturing back and jobs back into the community. We're not talking just about fashion design, we're talking about production, marketing, pattern drafting, retail, sales jobs. We have a lot of qualified designers.
Golar, your time is complete. Will you make your final comment? Thank you.
More manufacturing in Sacramento.
Well, Steph.
Completely agree with you. It's part of, it's part of what we're trying to, trying to get to here. Thank you so much, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kathy Rodriguez, then Robert Copeland, then Katie Valenzuela. Kathy Rodriguez?
Kathy had to leave, I believe.
I don't see Kathy, Robert Copeland, then Katie Valenzuela.
The previous speaker made my point, what I said at the 2 o'clock meeting. People are getting trained here, but they're leaving Sacramento for work. Now on item 15, I don't tr, I don't, I'm gonna vote no on Measure U for several reasons. One, I don't trust this city council. Two, I don't think the Oversight Committee is gonna have any teeth, it's gonna be enforceable. I mean, the city council gonna do what they want. Three, how should I put this? I don't trust SAC PD. I mean, if they're gonna spend more money on SAC PD, they should at least treat people with respect, and they're not doing it in all the cases. Like, how many people got killed in Sacramento by SAC PD, like Stephon Clark? I mean, really? If you want people to trust the vote for Measure U, you've got to give them the reason to trust the city council. And I was at a shock board meeting last Thursday, four of us voted no on Measure U out of eight, and I was one of the four that voted no. We, I don't trust the city council on this issue. But I'm gonna vote yes on 1, 2, and 10, prop 1, 2, and 10, that also came out, I'll vote yes on those three, and no on Measure U. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Katie Valenzuela. Ms. Valenzuela, then Chris Smith, then Flo Koffer.
Good evening. My name is Katie Valenzuela. I'm a resident and organizer living in midtown Sacramento. I'm honored to be joined up here by my friend and compadre, Tanya Faison. I am glad that you joined us with the Project Prosperity, because I didn't want to comment on too many, but I am disappointed with the meeting that I went to. I found dot maps and an unwillingness to engage in the discussion about gentrification, displacement, and racial inequity that economic development could perpetuate or confront head-on. I appreciated the conversation with the mayor and the city manager, but we'd like to see, I personally would like to see that conversation continue a little more intentionally. A little over a month ago, 350 Sacramento, Black Lives Matter Sacramento, and resident leaders from throughout the city sent you a letter. There are many other residents and organizations who couldn't sign on in time who support our requests. To date, we have not heard back from you about our requests, and our request was really simple. It was to commit to adopt four key changes before we'd be forced to oppose Measure U. And this wasn't just about Measure U money, that's a small percentage of your overall budget. This was about your entire budget. We were trying to be reasonable by not even asking you to implement the changes by October 3rd. We said just commit to doing it by October 3rd, and we will bring all of our resources and partners to bear to help you do this right. To remind you, our asks, our four asks were that we wanted to establish community engagement standards for all city decisions. 2:00 PM Law and Legislation meetings don't work for those of us who don't get to do this full-time anymore. Second, we wanted you to publish spending assessments every year for all of the money that the budget spends, and we want you to look at it by racial group, by neighborhood, by income group, so we understand if our money is helping or hurting, address the disparities we see in our communities. We wanted you to adopt participatory budgeting processes so that we have a say, a meaningful say, and we know what this looks like. It's well-established in the literature how we could do that from the city's perspective. And then finally, we wanted an Oversight Committee, not just for Measure U, but again, for the entire budget. And there's been some sophisticated recommendations given to you by other partners in the community about what that committee could look like to be meaningful. These are not just-
Golar, your time is complete.
I want to, if I may, I'm gonna engage Ms. Valenzuela for just a moment here, okay? Because I admit that we have not completed all of the requests that the coalition made, but I know that I'm looking at, I believe you signed on to this July 31st letter, is that, are we looking at the same letter?
No, our letter was sent the first week of August.
Okay. This is a letter signed by a number of community leaders, which talks specifically, made specific requests about the makeup of a new Measure U Advisory Committee. And you made some very specific recommendations that I thought were really good and constructive. And regardless of what position you choose to take on Measure U, that's, of course, you're absolutely right, but I just want to be clear that our city staff, and now hopefully the council tonight, has been responsive almost to a T to what you requested. I want to go-
Not our letter, to correct you, Mr. Mayor, that's a different group's letter. Our letter was for an entire budget oversight.
Okay. Then maybe I'm being, okay, well, I want to go through this, so this is Rolanda Wilkins, Dr. Flo Jean-Koffer, Faith McKinney, Danielle Prince.
That's a separate group, I mean, we're-
That's a different group. Okay, I may be confusing the groups then, but I hope somebody from this coalition who wrote the July 31st letter will come on up so that we can actually agree, hopefully, that the staff and now the council has been very responsive. In fact, this is, I mean, I don't want to overstate it, but the value of strong community input here. The committee stepped up and said, would you put, for example, excuse me, please? Would you put a person with expertise or experience in housing affordability on the commission? Yes. Will you put a person with expertise in community trauma and mental health on the commission? The answer in the recommended staff report is yes. Would you put a person with experience or expertise in the field of homelessness? The answer is yes. Would you put a seat for Sacramento resident of one of Sacramento's priority neighborhoods? In fact, the recommendation is that every council member have a, get to select somebody for the commission. Would you have a seat for Sacramento resident or priority neighborhoods aged 24 years or younger? The answer here is yes. And so I know that there are a variety of coalitions out there, and I know that we're focusing largely on Measure U right now, because that's what's upcoming in the next five or six weeks. But I'd just like to hear from some members of this coalition from the July 31st letter, even if our response, again, is not perfect-
Mr. Mayor, when can we expect a response to our letter?
Excuse me? That, that, let me finish, please, then I'll let you. That it is, that it is responsive to what at least a lot of folks in the community asked. Now, go ahead, your letter, I'm sorry, I don't have in front of me.
I'm asking about when we can expect a response to our letter. And again, I know this is just about Measure U, but that's a small percentage of the budget. I don't want to get distracted by just focusing on that. The entire budget is of question here.
Okay, I will personally make sure that you get a response from my office to your letter within the next several days, okay?
We did ask for a response by October 3rd, respectfully.
Well, that's tomorrow. We'll do, we'll do the very best that we can, okay? Promise you that. Excuse me? Okay.
Our next speaker is Chris Smith, and then Flo Koffer.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city manager, Chan. My name is Chris Smith, and I'm here on behalf of the Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce. In late July, this council placed a measure on the November 28 ballot relating to the transaction and use tax, commonly referred to as Measure U. As with any measure that sources funds through business community in the form of a sales tax on the consumer, we, as a chamber, initially had some concerns. As you may know, the Metro Chamber has made a four-point promise to the business community. We look to advance policies that build strong business, educate a ready workforce, better connect our region, and establish healthy, vibrant communities. In early August, Mayor Steinberg, you met with our board of directors to talk about this proposal, how to align with our four-point business promise, and address our concerns. Following a long and robust discussion of the merits of this issue, the Metro Chamber Board decided to take the lead and become one of the first organizations to support Measure U. While we do have several recommendations on improving the metrics of the inclusive economic development with regards to existing businesses, we believe that the mayor's office and city staff have made great progress on addressing those concerns and have engaged the business community in a meaningful way. We are proud to continue our support for these important and necessary measures for the city of Sacramento. We would like to thank city staff for their time and effort on these issues, and we look forward to our continued conversations on this. Thank you so much.
Chris, just a moment. Thank you so much. I know that Amanda, your CEO in Blackwood, made a number of suggestions for how Attachment 3B might be improved upon. I know the staff is in receipt of those suggestions. I am as well. I don't want to go through all of them right here, but I just want to say, they're sound suggestions. I mean, for example, to make sure that, as we talk about cultivating homegrown talent, that we link to the businesses and the industries where there is the most demand, and a variety of other similar constructive suggestions. So we'll work with staff, and if you could report back, please, to Amanda, that we'd like to incorporate as much of these suggestions as possible into the next version of this document, okay?
We'd be happy to, and thank you again for city staff for being so accommodating on these things.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our last speaker is Flo Koffer.
Yeah, okay, well, he mixed it up. Ms. Koffer, welcome, Dr. Koffer, welcome.
Thank you. So I was a part of the group that sent the letter that you were referencing, not Katie's group.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And so we, the reason that we brought this to the council is because we really wanted there to be an opportunity for communities to get involved in Measure U, in particular because it was coming up, certainly respecting the fact that the budget is much bigger than that and there are other concerns. Our, we were actually much more pleased with the version that went to Law and Ledge last week, and some of the changes that it made don't really reflect the spirit of what we were trying to do. In particular, we wanted the priority neighborhoods to be reflected, those are not. Now it's one per council district, and I think everyone would argue that Wood Lake is not the same as Del Paso Heights. And so not having, is not having carved out space for the priority neighborhoods is a problem. Similarly, we asked that someone under the age of 24 be represented on, and that was not included in the final list of groups.
Yes, it is. One member shall be between the ages of 16 and 24.
Oh, my apologies, okay. Then, then in addition, the taxpayers was not a part of our initial group, and it's since everybody has to be a resident of the city of Sacramento, we're not sure why that was a particular group that was called out for having expertise or being on the commission. But having the majority of the commission, now that it's ballooned from 11 to now 15 members, and only six of them are going to be provided by, you know, by the committee that oversees, and everyone else gets one seat, it's no longer about the balance of power, and it, the people who are being brought in to have specific expertise, that expertise is now being watered down. In particular, in the original version, there were two seats for economic development, one for community and one for industry. Now there's one. In the original recommendation, affordable housing was called specifically out, not just housing, and now housing, homelessness, affordable housing, and renters are all one seat. And we think that that really makes it so that the power is concentrated largely in people we don't know who are going to be individually appointed by people who are part of the council, and not based on some specific criteria about how we'd like to see this represented and the voices that need to be at the table.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Koffer, for all of your good and hard work, but I just want to have a discussion for a moment with you, because I don't respectfully agree with your characters. character. I'm going to make this commitment to you right now, tonight. I have one appointment. I will choose someone from a priority neighborhood. I say it publicly. Excuse me. So that then gets us to seven.
Okay.
Now, if you don't think that two out of eight members here are not going to choose representatives from priority neighborhoods, I would be willing to bet you right now that that's true. Alan Warren is going to have a choice between choosing someone from Woodlake or Del Paso Heights or anywhere else. And this is a man who's preaching inclusive economic development every day of the week here. We are, and so it, I understand that it's not perfect, and I understand that Law &amp; Ledge made some changes to ensure that the elected representatives here have a voice in terms of who constitutes this commission. But I think to conclude, that there won't be a majority of people who have either expertise and/or, and/or live in priority neighborhoods just will not be the end result of this. It will not be the end result of it. And contrasting this commission with the original Measure U Advisory Commission, which, which had nothing of the kind that we are talking about here, I think, you know, sometimes you have to meet your, the people you're working with a little bit halfway here, because I think this city has come more than halfway to try to ensure that this is, this is inclusive. And from the heart and from the head, we intend to spend this money in a way that improves neighborhoods, period.
But this is, this does not reflect what was initially from some of the, some, first of all, what was proposed.
A lot of your input was, is directly incorporated in this.
Certainly, but it's been watered down, and so the concentration of that power is different. It's also not similar to any of the other cities that were used as models for this. They all have content-specific. They don't allow their entire council and mayor to make completely like, to make appointments without any kind of, you know, qualification on them. If you look through, it's in your packet, each of them.
Publicly, that I will choose somebody from a priority neighborhood.
But what happens when the next mayor comes along, Mayor Steinberg?
Members want to say something similar, then we can, we can ensure that tonight, that there will be a majority.
That's not institutional. That's right now. And Measure U is a permanent sales tax, and so if, that's okay while you're mayor, but what happens when you're not mayor? What happens when all of you decide to go on and have other jobs? That's no longer something that the community can rely on. Like, that's not policy. Like, we make policy change because we want things to be institutional. We don't want them to be the flavor of the day, and that becomes the flavor of the day.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I would, I would just urge us to go back to looking at some of the other cities that this was modeled after, because they have content-specific. They don't have a 15-member commission that's made up almost entirely of people just because they're from each district. Like, I think we really need to think about how we're going to spend this money and give the community some assurances, because at the end of the day, this doesn't have teeth, and you all are going to be the ones making the choice. So at least make sure that the people have some, some feelings of faith and confidence in the group that's going to be making recommendations to you.
Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Let's, let's start having some conversation among the city council. Good public testimony. I'll start with Councilmember Warren.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and very spirited comments from our last speaker, of which I agree with a lot of what she was saying. I think there are some things, though, that could really help us in this process. You know, there are some things that are taking place at the state level that can help us in this journey, particularly in some of the impacted areas, like the promised zone and the opportunity zones. Those are very important tools that can incentivize private sector capital coming into our urban communities that have been underperforming. And so I guess what I'd like to highlight for our staff is to really look at how we could use the opportunity zone and the promised zones to help get the kind of impacts that we all want to see, and I think people in our audience want to see, particularly in our urban communities, communities with high concentration of minorities. And that map is out, so the people that don't know about opportunity zones, you can Google it, and it'll come up, and it'll show you where those areas are. I know District 2 has a large portion of opportunity zones in District 2. And so, I mean, there are some lessons from, you know, what has happened in the last couple of, or actually, the last year. Opportunity zones started in, at the end of 2017, essentially, and so Sacramento has really been one of the leaders, in case we didn't know. And we've only scratched the surface. There are a lot more we can do using those tools, and so we should figure out what we're doing right, and then let's try to scale that so we can have the kind of impacts that I think we'd all like to see. Also, earlier today, we talked about, or at least I mentioned, having a sustained focus in our disadvantaged communities, and it's not, you know, these, an approach whereby we just look at targeting during the course of our conversations at council, but we need a real institutionalized policy that can have a sustained focus in urban communities, and how we can then penetrate and break these cycles that we've gone through with decades of underperforming urban communities that has had a disproportionate negative impact on the minority community. It's extremely important, I think, that there is a sustained focus until we break the cycle in these communities that have been left behind. And then last, you know, workforce development is very important. Job opportunities, and if we look at, you know, these historical low unemployment rates that we have throughout the state and in fact throughout the country, but if you look at our urban communities, they are still lagging behind. Unemployment rates are still extremely high for youth, teenagers, and, and a lot of the traditionally left behind, which happen to be minorities. And so I think how we do that is very important, and who does it? We have to identify what we're going to do, and then who's going to lead that charge from a city's perspective to really take full advantage of the opportunities, opportunities we have to employ people in these underemployed communities. And so, you know, I think along with everything else we've said and everything else we're going to hear, the three things that I would hope that we make a priority, are sustained focus in these urban communities, understanding how we could better utilize promised zones, opportunity zones, formerly redevelopment agency properties. Leslie, you're very familiar with, with the concept. And then also the opportunity to employ people when right now we have a robust economy, yet people are still getting left behind. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. And Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to speak specifically to the Oversight Commission, because I was at the Law &amp; Ledge hearing last week, and I thought it'd be helpful to shed a little light. Dr. Koffer did recommend, I think, three changes, that the committee did incorporate a conflict of interest policy that was very robust, and then two other changes to the seats. I think, though, there was a give and take over the size, and our staff put together a very thorough report that was presented about the Law &amp; Ledge, and is in our packet, that enumerates several different cities and how they approach this. I just thought it'd be helpful to know that this recommendation that council members get to appoint is consistent with all of the cities in our packet who have a general sales tax and the oversight committees that they created, which are Riverside, San Jose, and Stockton. The only one that it's not consistent with is Long Beach, where they only had five appointees, if I remember correctly, and they're all chosen by the mayor. There's no substantive experience or community representative.
I'd make that substitute motion, by the way. Just kidding.
So, but, and then there were three other cities that, Mayor, there were three other cities.
Come on.
There were three other cities that were described in the report, and those specifically were cities that passed sugar, sweet, and beverage taxes, and their committees were more similar to what we're creating tonight, actually, with representation from public health and other things, targeted at community needs and underserved communities. But those sugar, sweet, and beverage taxes, I think, were specifically being targeted because of the way that they were passed with two-thirds votes. I think that this is very consistent, and I think part of the reason is that our existing committee has a neighborhood representative on there and some other things, and as we try to ensure that we have a balanced approach, I think each of us are going to try to find people from our communities that earnestly want to be engaged, whether they're from priority neighborhoods or just dedicated community leaders who want a voice at the table. I have a lot of people who think that they're cut out, and it's going to be an opportunity for them to apply. And the process we used for the Active Transportation Commission and for the Police Review Commission, I think, was a good one to give a wide breadth of opportunity for people to apply and then to choose from that pool of applicants. And so that's kind of how we tried to model it, and I think this is probably a good balance between breadth and depth of experience. And so I would move that we adopt the Law &amp; Ledge position on the Citizen Oversight Committee, and I'll leave the, the vote on the other one. So that's item 15, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. So motion to second item 15, not yet a motion item 14, but let's go through the remainder of the council comments. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so just to be clear, are we, we're going to try to move both of these items at the same time, or?
Well, they're separate votes, but we took up, we took the presentations together. Conversation, you can mix and match here.
Well, first, let's start, I want to start off with the conversation about Project Prosper. And, and, you know, I think to, you know, Ms. Valenzuela's point, you know, after that, after that meeting, I also had a number of recommendations on how to improve those outreach processes. And, and I think, you know, you know, I think, you know, that being the first meeting, it was the guinea pig, and it improved as it goes beyond, but the, the point about a community engagement strategy, that's something that I think, from our city standpoint, we need to do a better job of, because it's not just this issue that's going to come about, about how we finance and move things. There are going to be other issues that come up in the future. And so to me, I think that's a, from, you know, Mr. City Manager, a little, you know, my only direction and advice to you is to start, you know, with our new, I know we just hired a new public information officer, new on the ground, and so, but I do think that, that there needs to be a more thoughtful approach about a community engagement strategy. And the key term there is engagement, not the community, let me tell you, strategy, you know? And so with our new community PIO, I hope that we start looking at that. But at the very least, as long, since I've been in Sacramento, this process with Project Prosper, I do have to say, has, has been, has had much more of an impactful way of getting input from, from community members, and at least the one that we had at the Fruit Ridge Neighborhood Associate, Fruit Ridge Community Center, that had folks from Fruit Ridge Manor, from Southeast Village, from, you know, South Oak Park, Tahoe Park, and Lawrence area along the Stockton Boulevard. To me, I thought that was one of the few times that I've ever seen where we had so many people with, coming in to actually have a conversation about what our city should be like, and what Project Prosper and what we're talking about today, I think, is setting some standards and some goals, and it's, and obviously, it's big and broad right now, and we're going to refine that as we move forward, but it does do a lot of things. I think it connects the dots on a lot of the issues that we want. It's giving clear staff direction about the expectations we have of our city, and that we want to focus on homegrown talent, homegrown, you know, opportunities for kids. And the, the first item on there, we talk about people and people, you know, capital, and how we, how we will focus on them, it's this concept of cradle to career. And to me, that, I think, is, is the most fundamental piece. We have to figure out strategies that are going to help out those that are living in Sacramento for Sacramento's. The, the, the second piece, I think, that, I think, is, is important, is this concept of data and the implications of data. And again, I, you know, I respect Ms. Valenzuela. She's, she's a great analyst for the state legislature, and so she, this is, this is her Bailey wig. And I do think we have to figure out, and Mr. Hasso, I think you knew, your new role as economic development guru for the city is, is figure out, not just data for data's sake, but what are the, what are those implications to communities, you know, and figuring out how do we start doing that at a better sense. So as we move forward with Project Prosper, I want to make sure that the data we get also has some relevance to that. How, how is that improving the quality of life in our community, and how is that moving that ball forward? What I don't know, and maybe, and I was having a sidebar here with Councilmember Cheniers, is can, in the Measure U Committee Advisory Committee, can we give the committee the charge, or is it in there already, for them to also develop or be, be the ones to create the community engagement strategy? You know, and I think it's important that the city start doing that on its own, just for the sake of operations, but I do think that the committee should have the ability to be able to have that authority to, to have a community engagement strategy and create that. And I don't know if any of our city staff can answer that, or Councilmember Chenier, if you want to respond to that piece. Okay, good. And so you're punched up next, so I guess I'll let, I'll let you bring that. But with that, Mr. Mayor, I, I am very optimistic about this move forward. I, you know, nowhere do I ever assume that anything that we put together in policy is going to be perfect, but it is a solid and strong step forward that, that we're going to refine as we move forward, but one that I feel confident that is going to give us more input than just what's the thought at City Hall. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion that Councilmember-
It was already, Councilmember Harris seconded it.
Already seconded.
But you could move item 14, which is the metrics piece, if you want.
I will move item 14.
Okay, is there a second on item 14? Second by Councilmember Chenier. So both 14 and 15 have now have been moved and seconded, and we will proceed with Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to repeat some of the things I said this afternoon as we go forward, because I think it's important. So let, let me start with the metrics piece, and I want to thank Michael and his staff. You guys have done a great job, and also a lot of community members and others who have really participated and engaged with it, including Mr. Dana from Mutual Assistance Network, who was a leader, and Mike McKeever, and others, Chamber, and Barry Broom, and others, Chet Hewitt as well. I want to be clear that this is fundamentally a different way of doing business, and will take us some time to perfect or get on the road to perfection. There will, we're not adopting something that is going to be set in stone forever, but something that I believe will evolve as we learn through doing, as we learn through the process of, of this review. I actually think that the work that you will do over time will get to some of the things that both Ms. Valenzuela and Ms. Koffer were talking about, perhaps not immediately, but over time as we get there. What, what I think we're trying to do is build a different infrastructure within the city of how we budget and how we spend our money, and how we look at whether that money is being effective or not. So, you know, I would ask for a little bit of patience on that aspect, to work with us as we go forward. There's no question in my mind that as we go through one budgeting process at least, and this is for all funds, so it hits a little bit of what Ms. Valenzuela was talking about, and I want to come back and address it specifically, this is for the entire budget. And adopting the metrics and evolving those metrics as we work with the community, see what's most important, is going to be critical as we go forward. So I'm, I'm actually excited about it. I think what it will push us to do will be more open about how we spend our money and what the impacts are, and hopefully, as we do that, that will build trust within the community. But that's a two-way street on it. So that's, that's the first piece, and so I'm excited about it. It's pretty wonkish, but, and it's going to be a lot of work, but I think it's all good to go forward, and I think we could be, and Mr. Broom said this this afternoon, we could become a national model for cities doing this work. It won't be easy. It will require patience. It will require some iteration as we go to make sure that we get it right. Mr. Jessup, I want to thank you for leading the effort on it. On the other pieces, which I was a little bit more involved with, a couple of things that I want to say. So first of all, I want to address Ms. Valenzuela, because I think your four points are all very valid. I've spent a lot of time looking at participatory budgeting. There's a lot of people doing experiments on it. Some is working, some is not, but I think it's, it's worth a council discussion. The other pieces you have as well, I think, are all important. I act, and, and you've addressed this as far as our budget, not necessarily Measure U. And so I want to try to separate those two items, and I have a recommendation for the mayor, is that, you know, I, I would hope that there's not a rush to answer the letter tomorrow or the next day, because I think this is part of our budgeting process. And my recommendation, and we can have this discussion, is that we would take it to our Budget and Audit Committee and have a discussion about those pieces and how to embed all of those pieces, if we want, or three or four of them, the participatory budgeting, I don't know. I think that's, that's an educational piece for people right now, but, but we have- But, but we have that discussion and see what and how we would embed that within our budget process. Because I think that's the more appropriate place it should go, rather than trying to wedge it into the Measure U discussion.
I just want to be responsive to.
No, I understand that.
Ms. Valenzuela and her letter, so we have to, I'm happy to respond tomorrow, but I think you make a good suggestion. We take it seriously and really do it in the right way.
So I'm happy, if you want, I'm happy to sit down and have a discussion with you about that. And as someone who sits on the Budget Committee, and I'm happy to bring it to the Budget Committee if you want to do that. On the, on the composition, you know, I, I was at the point, and, and this was, you know, a discussion that we had Law and Ledge, and Ms. Kofor, you were there, and kind of saw it unfold. So, you know, I think that we can do a good job with the fifteen, and I think that there can also be, and will be crossover between the people that we, as individual council members appoint, and the skill sets that we're looking at. So, you know, I, I don't, you, you had given us a letter of your requests, which I think is very fair, and I appreciate the community engagement, and we had that discussion as well. I think you pushed us to think differently about how we were going to do this. You had three sets of recommendations. I think overall, we probably took in about seventy-five to eighty percent of them, if that's right. Some composition change, and I'll give you that, and we can, we can do the numbers however you want to do that. I, I think we can get, with what we've done here, and I'm going to support this, I think we'll get to where we want to be, and I think, and I'm not going to speak for you, but I think we'll get to where you hope this commission or committee is working. And that's providing advice and recommendations to the council. I'm happy to, to do two things. One is to include, as a friendly amendment, if the maker of the motion will take it, that one of the charges should be that this group works with the city staff on community engagement and how we do it, particularly around the items that are, that are involved with Measure U. I would say, and, and I want to go back to the metrics piece, I think between these two things, which are very complementary, they will grow to build the infrastructure that we need within the city to help us do our business. It's not going to be immediate, and we have to take it somewhat incrementally, because if we bite off too much at once, we're, we're not going to be successful. So with that, I'm going to stop there, but I think that we're on the right road. This is an ordinance subsequent count, I, I agree with you that it should be institutionalized. That's not a problem for me. But how we do it is something that we can talk about. You know, I, I think that we've been pretty successful, certainly with this council and the various commissions that we've named to have a good diverse set of folks who are doing it. I'm sure that people in the audience will help us find those people to apply. I, I certainly work with the community on every appointment that I make, as you know, since you're one of those appointments. But I think that we can, we can always do better. And I think it's a, a give and take that, with the community, to make sure we do it. But I'm going to support this motion as is. The, the only other thing, and I'm not going to offer an amendment on this, I will, as a friendly amendment, on adding the charge of community engagement in here, and I hope Mr. Hanson, you and will accept. The other thing we don't, and this was pointed out to me by Teresa Rivera today, we don't have anything about our elderly in here. And so that's, that is kind of a, well, we have a whole city that we're representing, and I think we need to try to get, we need to try to get different viewpoints in this. So I'm, I'm going to ask that, as we, and I am sure that we will come back and take a look at how this is working, but that we put that on the agenda and look at folks who are a little bit senior in their years, like Mr. Carr and myself, as we go forward, because I think that's a voice that we don't have here.
Ms. Rivera is a wise woman.
She is, she is. So I'm not going to do that at this point, but as we go forward, to think about it.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Hi, Mayor. I punched up again. I just wanted to address Councilmember Chenier's request for friendly amendment. I, I don't have a problem with engagement. I think the whole point of this advisory committee is to engage the community. When it comes to the budget, a lot of times on commissions, we're doing a lot of important work, the planning commission, the parks commission, but nobody knows who their parks commissioner is. Almost everybody will know who their council member is. So ultimately, the responsibility and authority rest with us. As many times as we want to give that responsibility to somebody else, we're the ones who are ultimately accountable and supposed to be responsible. So I just, you know, as we try to design the perfect committee, I look around the dais and, and I know that these are the people who the communities have chosen, and every four years, we're up for reelection. And that is, that is an opportunity to change or to, to be consistent, but for that engagement to occur, I, I think that this advisory committee has a very broad task already, but if they can engage in very substantial and positive community work, I'm all for that. Because I know that our time can be limited, because we are still part-time council members. I know some of you think that we are full-time, but we're a part-time body, except for the mayor, who's very lucky to be full-time. But I do think that this is a good thing to do. And, and I think that that oversight and that outreach is an absolutely essential component of what this advisory committee needs to do.
Great. So I appreciate that, and, and I would hope that staff can come up with the, the language on what that looks like. And I want to emphasize that this would be working with the city staff on this, and certainly with the council. We're not trying to give this group of fifteen responsibility for doing community outreach hits. But I think through the work that they'll be doing, it'll be important. I, I want to echo what Mr., what Gero said, too. I mean, the Project Prosper meetings, I think were the best-attended meetings in my eight years on the council, as far as community meetings go. They were some of the best-attended that we've had out in the community. And so if we can continue to build on that and work with the community to make sure we, we get to what's right, that's good. And, Mr. Mayor, I hope you'll also take the suggestion about bringing to the Budget Committee some of the suggestions that we've heard.
Yes, yes, absolutely will. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Most of the discussion tonight has been about the Citizens Advisory Committee, it's not a commission. And yes, it's very important to gather our constituents' voices when we look at our budgeting process and how we will spend money if we get the windfall of Measure U. And of course, that's not guaranteed. We'll see how the voters decide in the future. I actually wanted to talk a little bit more about the framework, because that's the essence of this discussion. And I have to tell you that I like it. I liked the Brookings Institution report, it was very informative. I laud staff for the work that they've done on this item. When I read through the, the staff report, I thought, you know, what would it look like if the city of Sacramento did not have economic disparity? You know, what, what would it look like if North SAC and North Gate met a view in Valley High and Oak Park and the, the Stockton Corridor had the same, they were on par, they have the same quality of life and the same amenities as East SAC and Land Park and Wood Lake? That's what this is about. That's what we're talking about here in essence. But then on top of that, being wise enough to set that goal, but to lay in performance metrics so that we will always know where we stand in achieving that goal. I think it's a really noble goal to set, and it will never happen unless we set it as a goal. Earlier today, Councilmember Warren said something that I think was very, very strong, maybe even profound, Ellen. He said that our underserved communities are actually opportunity areas, and I, I completely agree with him on that point. But there's a taboo about investing in these areas, and we have to break through that. And I think that this framework can be a step in moving in that direction. As other council members have said, this is a long-term process. You know, we're not going to change the city overnight, you know, but, but we have to start. And this, this is where we say, okay, we have a different vision for the way that the city of Sacramento, that the leaders of the city of Sacramento have chosen to move. I think it's, it's bold and it's noble. I think it's overdue. So I'm very much in support of the framework. It is important to understand that the Citizens Advisory Committee is advisory. You know, they will make advice to the city council. And as Councilmember Hanson, Vice Mayor Hanson said earlier, and I, and I agree with this analysis, many people will apply for a seat on this, on this committee, and those people will have the inclination and qualifications of inclusionary development. That's what we're looking for here. We're, we're trying to sort of level the playing field economically so that everybody has opportunities. And we, as council members, will necessarily choose from that candidate pool for the people that move us in that direction. It worked well with the police commission, I think it will work, our police, yeah, the police commission, it will work very well with the Citizens Advisory Committee. And so I think we're moving in the right direction, and I'm in support of both motions.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Jennings.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And I think my colleagues have spoken, and I've listened to them long and hard, and I just have two points I want to make. I understand the, the concern about the size of the committee, and I've heard all the points of view as far as what it could potentially do. I also think it would be unfair for me as a council member to not have a seat at the table for District Seven. And I think that every council member on this seat would say the same thing, that if my district were not represented by any of the members on there, if we excluded all council members from bringing a member on there, if District Seven wasn't on there at all, it would not be equitable for them to be able to have a voice at the table, my district would not be represented. This way, I can ensure that my district is represented, and I can make the best decision along with those who advise me as to who can be the best person to serve on that district in order to reach the goals that we're trying to reach. So I think that's very important. And then, Mayor, on the other side, I just wanted to kind of bring a point that I've noticed in, in this hearing, and I appreciate everyone who came out tonight to speak. But our constituents should not have to come to this meeting in order for their letter to be answered, or their, for them to understand the decision that's been made. So half of that's on you as, as constituents, because whether it's at Law and Ledge, where you can come to the meetings, and I know you work just like we do, or any other opportunity as far as interacting with your council member to find out the decisions that have been made, or what's on the table. So that's on you, but it's also on us to do a better job of communicating with those who actively want to be engaged in the process. We just got to find a way to do that. And I, you know, however we do it, we got to do a better job, and that's answering those letters, and that's answering the constituents, because when it comes to trust, that's how you build trust. And you have to have that. And so I, I do want you to know, as far as I'm concerned, I hear what you're saying, I've heard you very clearly, and from my standpoint, I think we need to develop a process where we're better communicating with you. So you may not like the answer, but we've done a good job of communicating with you. You didn't come to this meeting to find out the answer.
Okay, I mean, fair enough. Fair enough. You're right. I, I will talk to you after about making sure that we not only respond to your letter, but that we fold it into the kind of process that Councilmember Chenier suggests, so that we can really consider exactly what it is you are asking in a, in a serious way. I, I want to do a couple of things. First, I want to speak to this issue that has not come up tonight directly, but that we need to address equally with the other items we're taking up tonight, and that is the efficiencies issue, which the taxpayers and the voters are also asking about. Is the city being as efficient as it could with their dollars? And given that we're asking the voters here for additional investment, we have a duty to maximize the efficiency of our service delivery by all reasonable means. So I'd like to suggest that the council consider a council resolution that directs staff to identify and implement all reasonable efficiencies, productivity measures, and any other opportunities to address future fiscal challenges over the next several years to ensure our ability to continue to deliver programs and services, as we know, that our current cost per service will continue to rise. I think it's important we commit to preserving currently authorized positions and consider opportunities that might reward both employees and the city when efficiencies and productivity measures are designed and implemented in a collaborative way. I'd like to request that the independent auditor, in coordination with the city manager, return to the city council next week, and I know we're going to have a shorthanded council, but to return next week with a draft council resolution and a timeline to solicit consulting services to accomplish this task, with the goal of having prospective actions that the council could consider in early 2019. I think it is a very important part of the package. I've been talking with the city manager about this for weeks, as well as several council members, and we want to bring that back for consideration. Now on the main issue here tonight, couple of things on the, on the metrics themselves, which I agree Jeff Harris maybe didn't get sufficient attention in the debate and discussion about the Accountability Commission, but this is really the meat of the work here, and it really does follow up on the Project Prosper work, where, in which so many of our city residents participated. I want to make sure that the next evolution of, of this work really drills down to racial disparities, to gender disparities, to ethnic disparities, to zip code and neighborhood disparities, and that it also include the following principles. Number one, if we establish some form of an economic, inclusive economic development fund, that we set it up in such a way that we are always recovering, where possible, our principal, so that we're always able to reinvest, and not just grant one-time monies, if you will, never to have the opportunity again. Secondly, I want to make sure that we've, we've talked about many times, that these resources for economic development are used as, as catalyst or leveraged resources, and that the money does not go out unless it's matched, three to one, four to one, five to one, whatever the appropriate ratios are, so that we are using this money as the seed to be able to grow jobs and to be able to help our neighborhoods. And finally, I want to get down to the essence of this, because when it comes to how, how this is done is very, very important. But I want to go back to June the seventh, and the talk that I gave at Sacramento City College that launched this whole effort, this one-cent effort, that, that everyone's talking about now in the community, and that I've had on my mind for a long time. And when I, when, when you boil it all down, it comes down to this. I said the following. Allow me to begin today by talking with you about a question that's on my mind. Why does a third grader living in South Sacramento have less of a chance in life than a third grader living in East Sacramento? Among the many complex policy questions, challenges, and opportunities facing our beloved city, that single question should both haunt us and compel us to take dramatic action. That's what this is about. That's what these metrics are about, is the means to an end. That's what this Resident Citizens Advisory Committee is about, to make sure that we do everything in our power to grow this economy for the benefit of all Sacramentoans, but to the special benefit of people who have been traditionally and consistently left out, and the neighborhoods that have been traditionally and consistently left out. That's the test. And it is reflected in the, the metrics and the framework that is before you tonight as it continues to evolve. And I love the question, what would it look like if cities, if all the city's neighborhoods did not have such disparities? What tool do we have in this city, or set of tools do we have in this city to even try to accomplish the noble mission that you're demanding from us, and that we are, and that we are grappling with? Perfect should not be the, perfect should not be the goal here. But purposeful, intentional action with a real framework, real accountability, and backed by real resources, is the most dramatic set of steps that we can take to actually fulfill the promises that we all made when we ran for office, and that our forefront, and most important in terms of the oath and the duties that we, that we have all taken on. So items fourteen and fifteen have been moved and have been seconded. Let's take item fourteen first. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain, that passes unanimously. Item fifteen, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
As amended.
As amended. Let's go again, fifteen. All in favor, as amended, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain, that passes unanimously. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Off to a good start, everybody. Let's keep going. Thank you very much. That concludes those items. Now let us take council comments, and then we will take public comments for items not on the agenda. Are there council comments tonight? Councilmember Gueda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before Mr. Broom leaves the council chambers, I wanted to do an AB 123 report, 1234 report, forgot the four, and talk about this last week, a group of us, Mr. Hassel here from Economic Development, also the Air Quality Management District, our supervisor Serna, the leadership of Mr. Broom and his team, and Sac State, Yvonne Harris from Sac State, our new Associate Vice President for Economic Development at the campus, went to visit the Aachen University Institute in Germany to look at how we could bring the future of zero emission infrastructure and bringing jobs to Sacramento. They are highly interested, and I think there's a lot of interest in how we move and connect the dots. Today's conversation links those two. How do we make sure that we replicate what they did over there, which is ensure that there are job opportunities for their residents in the future of zero emission and mobility? So rather than California, and Mr. Broom has said this before, making these policies of zero emission and better air quality, and then all the jobs to meet those standards happen in some other city, and in fact, in some other state, how do we make sure that as we set those high standards for air quality, we do those today? And that's what we learned at this opportunity to visit all of the different startups and job opportunities and training programs as we were in Germany. With that, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you also for coming out to the Neighborhood Association yesterday and getting on the hot seat back in the neighborhood. But that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate the comments you made at the end of the discussion on the last two items. And I've watched this council, this Sacramento City Council, for years, and never have I seen the whole council committed to what you just said. There have been different people in these seats, and they did not agree that all the communities in Sacramento must be lifted up, and they voted that way. This is the first time I've seen a council with all nine members absolutely dedicated to making sure that these undeserved communities get a better break. And you're doing it in a lot of different ways, not just in this effort, but a lot of different efforts. I just want to report, we said farewell to the Urban Land Institute on Friday. They came with experts in finance, transportation, architecture, transit-oriented development, took a good, hard look at both Meadowview, Mac, and Florin Roads. They're leaving with a, they left us the exit briefings. They're going to file a final report in a couple of weeks with recommendations and ideas on things that we can pursue, especially around development of the light rail stations that are at Franklin, that are at Meadowview and Florin Road. Looking forward to their final presentation. It was brought on by your Congresswoman Doris Matsui, arranged for them to come, along with Supervisor Kennedy, to bring this distinguished group of experts who do this all around the country to take a look at Meadowview and Florin. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few announcements for this week. The River Park Neighborhood Association General Meeting is this Saturday, October 6th, at 10:00 a.m. at Caleb Greenwood School on Carlson Drive. The Sacramento Greek Festival is this Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Saturday at noon to 10:00 p.m., Sunday at noon to 8:00 p.m. at the Greek Orthodox Church of the Enunciation, 616 Alhambra Boulevard. Admission is $5. Children under 12 are free. It's a really fun event, a real cultural experience. There will be an open house at the Old Fire Station 15 this Saturday, also October 6th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. That's at 1591 New Borough Drive in South Natomas. And I will be having office hours on October 8th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the South Natomas Community Center. I'll have PD, fire code, and representatives from the Parks Department with me to answer questions of my constituents.
Thank you very much. Councilman Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. If you have monitors, televisions, desktops, old desktops, notebooks, PCs, VCRs, stereo equipment, speakers, keyboards, PDAs, digital cameras, zip drives, whatever you have, this Saturday at John F. Kennedy in the parking lot, they're going to be taking your free e-waste, and it's going to be a fundraiser for the John F. Kennedy Marching Band and Color Guard. So I encourage you to go through your home, your work, your garage, or your storage unit, and bring all that electronic equipment that you'll never utilize again, and get rid of it, and it's going to go to a good cause to help the John F. Kennedy Marching Band and Color Guard, this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. in the John F. Kennedy High School parking lot. And right after that, at 1:00 to 4:00, we're going to be at Seymour Park, Carroll and Windsor, to do a little spruce up. You can help with painting, cleaning, some light weeding. We're going to do everything we can to make that park more beautiful than it is right now. We're going to have snacks and refreshments out there for you to make sure that you have energy in order to do the work. All we need is you. So I encourage you to come out. That'll be from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday as well, at Seymour Park and Carroll and Windsor Park. Thank you.
Very good. Councilman Chenier.
Great, thanks. I just wanted to add a couple of things really quickly to also thank to the Urban Land Institute, and you left off Secog, who helped bring them out as well, so I just want to note that. But I think they did a great job. I also want to thank the young people at Burbank High School, who were so articulate about what they need and what they want, and all of the other community members who participated in the couple of days. I believe the ULI did 85 interviews while they were here with folks about how to work on the neighborhood, how to revitalize pieces, and the transit-oriented development pieces at both Florin and Meadowview. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I have just one brief announcement, that the PNP E Committee will be changed pursuant to, I guess a lot of people agreeing, to a three-person body with one alternate. The following council members will be appointed to the committee. Councilmembers Ash, Beak, and Hanson as members, with Councilmember Warren as the alternative. Okay? Thank you. All right. Let us now hear public testimony for items not on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I have 20 speakers signed up from items not on the agenda. Just want to remind folks, this meeting is being video streamed and can be viewed live on the city's website or later from the archive files. Members of the public who wish to address the council should have turned in a speaker slip, so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules of procedure outline decorum expected in the chambers and can be found on our website. A copy is in the back of the room and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yetting from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer will request that a person cease disruptive conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the meeting. Each speaker has two minutes to address the council. A cordless microphone or assisted listening device is available from the clerk. Please silence your cell phones or other communication devices, and refrain from using flash photography or lights on video equipment. And parking validations are also available from the clerk at the front of the room. So again, I have 20 speakers. The first is Mac Worthy, then Pastor Joan Cannard, then Jay Ray Narjan.
Good afternoon. Oh, Mr. Steinberg, you just need to stand here and listen, because you...
He's the restroom, I'm sorry.
Well, listen from back there. I am the person that called the police department to Sac High the other day. Now, the people that was demonstrating at Sac High put babies, and I got a grandson, they in danger. When you have a baby to leave a class, that baby's supposed to leave the supremacy. Now, may I go and help? May I help? That's under investigation. I'll be down sooner or sooner Thursday. I was at the Sac High last night. Why attack Sac High of all the other schools? Now, the people act, had a credentials, but Black Lives Matter do not have a credentials. It's not there. And I'm warning the government to put Black Lives Matter under investigation, because anything happened to my baby, we will not need, because I take care of myself. Now, we want to move to, to put this up on the podium here. Black people, this is your problem. Too many nonprofit organizations, kind of parasite, lead another parasite. That's the problem black folks have. She got $80,000 for this. Where did it come in the neighborhood? Nowhere. People, this is what you got to do. Where is the economics for black folks? You ain't got that. That's what you're losing. A parasite can't do, it breed with another parasite. It can't leave them nowhere. You can put them on pounds, pounds everywhere, and you ain't going to get nothing. Now, said with three studies of what went on here tonight about 14 and 15, why wouldn't I invite? You can sacrifice whatever you want, but I'm going to speak my piece, because we will never get nowhere, and we won't have nothing but our black behinds when it come down. In fact, I got a phone call from somebody today, said I'm beginning to look at Trump the same way you look at Trump.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Our next speaker is Pastor Joan Cannard, Jay Raj Narantin, then Tracy Mapes. Mapes?
Good evening. Councilmember meeting and audience, please, 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 put 12 cents a gallon for gas back on the ballot. We need our roads fixed. It's messy. It's messing up our cars. The alignment, tires, engine, the whole car. I'm glad rent control is on the ballot for November. California is a leader state. We need rent control here in California. It starts with us, and the rest of the United States of America will follow. I thank God for rent control. Please, 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 put 12 cents a gallon of gas back on the ballot. Again, our roads, highways, roads, period, needs to be fixed. Please, 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 California, don't be stupid. We need our roads fixed, our cars, we can't mess up our cars. Please, 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 everyone, rent control is a must. We need it here in California. Again, I thank God. It's on the November ballot. I'm going to vote no on Proposition 10. I want to thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jay Raj Narantin, Tracy Mapes, and then Robert Copeland.
It's Jay Raj Narantin.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm a member, I live in District Six. I have a small commercial project that I've been working with Development Engineering for the last two years. Last week, we received an email from SMUD, who was working on an offsite project with us, said that the project has changed. Two members of your staff from either Department of Transportation, or Development Engineering, or Department of Utilities changed the plans last second. I need your help. I want to know what happened. My plans are up to city code. The suggestions that they're making are simply suggestions, they're not city standard. It's really not fair that I had to go through this, especially since my project is being sidetracked. I'm not in the city, you know, main grid. I'm not in Midtown. I'm not in downtown. I don't have a lot of funds to fund this project, and I don't have any financial backers. You know, I don't have help from the city, and I'm not asking for help, but for this specific issue, I would like somebody to get back to me and tell me why two individuals were able to stop my project when I've already had four cycle reviews, and it's been in the city's possession the whole time.
Sir, I know Councilmember Gera wants to respond to you, but also Assistant City Manager Fran Holbacken is in the back and would like to help you try to resolve this as well. Mr. Gera.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. First of all...
Let me finish last, I have 31 seconds.
We paused your clock, if you want.
Okay, all right, go ahead. No, you go first.
No, Mr., thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Mr. City Manager, you know, Mr. Raj here, I want to first applaud his efforts to try to bring a market down to a food desert, and, you know, with very little resources, they've been able to move forward on this project. And I've found it a little frustrating to see that, two years after the fact, right when they're already got the barbed wire laying down, and the walls are coming up, that his project's being delayed. And unlike a very large capitalized project, that might be able to withstand, you know, some time and to go back to contracting services, I mean, this is a project where, you know, you have a local supporter of the community who lives in the community in a food desert who's willing to create a supermarket and a little market for folks there, you know, where all we have is other than that, gas stations. We need to help them move their project forward. So if Ms. Holbacken can help on that issue, I mean, we need to move that forward, Mr. City Manager.
Absolutely. I'm not familiar with the project, but Ms. Holbacken can help.
Thank you. I was just going to say, I was going to reach out to my SMUD board member, but he's moved on to bigger and better things, so I haven't seen him for a while. I just wanted to say hi, Mr. Carr, and it's nice and good seeing you again. I look forward to working with your staff and yourself, Mr. Gueda. And hopefully, when we have the grand opening, you're invited, as well as any other people sitting up here today. You guys are all invited. Just ask Eric for the invitation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tracy Mapes, Robert Copeland, then Alan Ash.
Are you ready for Tracy?
Tracy, yes, please.
Mayor Steinberg, council members. I'm here to request an emergency resolution for providing portable toilets for the Ahern and North B Street area. This is basically your District, I'll put this up, this would be your District Nine. Basically, homeless acampment of 40 tents has sprung up. It's increased in volume by 30% in the last 20 days. And now, I know you guys don't consider this a crisis situation, but it is. And we need toilets out there to serve these people, and I can't go through the permit process, but I would even pay for the toilets to go out there.
Thank you.
And so I'd like you to address the situation in a timely manner. I know you guys were out there two years ago with your trailer that cost $35,000, and you ended up spending $213,000 in a six-month period. And you deemed it not feasible to be able to continue that because of the cost. I did a cost estimate that would be 14% of that to manage the garbage for an entire year. And I can't see you leaving these people out there with nothing. So I'd like you to answer to this.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff. So the River District is in District Three?
Correct.
It's something that I've dealt with the entire time I've been elected. You're right, there's an increase in camping in that area currently. There's two things. First off, there are bathrooms available a block to the east there at Loews and Fishes during the daytime hours. Additionally, we've created a program with the county to reinstitute the pit stop program, but rather than do it outdoors, it'll be indoors at the old El Hogar Building at North AA and 14th. So within a half a block of this camping activity you've seen. It's important for people to note that we are not enforcing our camping ordinance. We're not moving these people along. We're taking a different tack in terms of working with the homeless and trying to create shelter. At the same time, you know, there's a lot of illegal activity that happens on Ahern. I see it daily, and we do enforce about that, and we will. But the fact of the matter is, we are actively engaged in creating facilities for people who choose to camp here. We don't want people to camp here. This is not, you know, a camping area. So we're moving in that direction on a couple of fronts, and things are going to get pretty robust very soon about that. gonna get pretty robust very soon about that. Um, you know, I, I just have to say that this is a big issue that we've tackled in these chambers for a long time, and we've made progress, and we will continue to make progress. But I will say this, we've put porta-potties out in this area in the past, and they were destroyed within three hours. It's not a solution. We've tried it. It's been done and failed numerous times. Even a porta-potty on the Loews and Fishes property was not successful.
I'm willing to take the risk to rent them myself.
Well-
But I need the permit process streamlined. I'm, this is a city problem, you should be paying for this.
And we are. Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Go ahead.
No, your time, your time is up. We-
You have time! You have time! You have time!
Okay. Take a few more seconds. I apologize, I missed, missed the time clock.
What I wanted to say is that A Street, uh, facility won't be open for another two weeks. These toilets are needed here tomorrow. These toilets are needed here now. I want ten garbage cans from the city so that they can provide garbage service pickup once a week, and I want four toilets delivered to that location.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Robert Copeland, Alan Ash, James Fago Clark.
Thank you, sir.
I'm a shocked board member. I'd like to echo what, uh, my previous speaker said right before me. Uh, how's it gonna get robust, you know, next, uh, quickly? Cause I don't, I'm, I'm a shocked board member, I don't know nothing about that. Uh, City Councilmember Harris? You're not doing a good job communicating with the community on anything. Uh, as far as, uh, what Rick Jennings says earlier, he made a good point. I agree with it. If, uh, if I contact a City Councilmember or any City Councilmember, they should get a response. You may not like the response, but you should get one. I agree with, uh, Rick Jennings on this one. And if you want, a City Councilmember wants to argue with the public, I think they shouldn't know what the heck they're talking about first. I mean, uh, would, how are you treating Katie Valenzuela and this other, uh, young lady here? Well, shameful, Mayor Steinberg. You know why people don't respect City Council? Cause people are in pain, they're, they want action done with the police shooting the black people, uh, young black men, and a City Councilmember is not doing a darn thing about it? So get on the ball or go home. I, I like to see people, I'd like to see a City Councilmember get the job done. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alan Ash, James Fago Clark, and then David Andre. Alan, is Alan here?
Bucket constitutions for everyone up on the dais. Hello, I'm Alan Ash. I'm co-chair of the Sacramento area chapter of the ACLU. I'm also a recovering attorney, which means, uh, these days I try to only use my legal powers for good, or, as we say, pro bono. That's why when I watched comments at City Council last month, as I usually do when activists I know are speaking, I knew our ACLU chapter had to send this letter I just handed out. You just can't punish the use of profanity in a public forum that's not otherwise disruptive, and when Carly Brannon dropped her F-bomb at City Council last month, uh, and then walked away, if there was any disruption, it came from the mayor's outraged response removing Carly from the meeting. And that's not right, and that's not constitutional. Our letter showing it's not constitutional includes a long quote from the Supreme Court explaining the Constitution protects not only thoughts but feelings, including feelings expressed through very emotive words. What the Supreme Court is saying is basically the same things many activists have told you. They're expressing their feelings, their truth, and you should listen and hear it rather than policing their tone. Of course, emotions and words are going to be raw when the topic is people getting gunned down with no justice and no accountability, like Joseph Mann, Stephon Clark, and Daryl Richards. When people express those emotions, it can get kind of ugly in here, but the abstract principle is really pretty beautiful. All people without fear of punishment have the right to criticize in their own words their mayor, their president, or even Senator Jeff Flake in an elevator, and when government officials listen, ordinary people can change the course of their government. So I hope in the future you all will listen to your constituents, learn from their experiences, and as the Constitution requires, let them express themselves using the words they think are best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clark? Clark, and then David Andre.
I definitely wanna echo that sentiment, uh, that you should definitely listen to what we're saying rather than try to police people's, uh, tones and emotions when they're trying to address issues where people are literally dying in your streets. I also wanna draw attention to a report that was just recently, uh, released from Berkeley Law concerning business districts, otherwise known as human, ah, homeless exclusionary districts. And there's some fairly interesting findings that they found, such as every time they're in here, uh, doing advocacy work, they're actually violating the California Constitution because some of that money is coming from public funds that are only supposed to be meant for improvements to the businesses that are within those districts. So, that's fairly problematic. You know, you've got these, uh, shadow governments performing government functions, and then misusing the money that they're raising off of public properties. Every pro, public property in their districts is spent paying assessment fees to these business districts. I think you should definitely look into that. Seventeen percent of the downtown partnerships alone is just from publicly owned properties. Um, and when that's being spent on advocacy work rather than specific benefits specifically to the businesses within those districts, that's a violation of the, the way the laws around bids were, um, drafted. Uh, it's also extremely problematic that our City Councilmembers sit on the Board of Directors of these shadowy governments that are doing advocacy work towards our City Council. I, I really kinda question that. You know, you guys make a proposal, then you get your business district friends that are sitting on the same board as you to come and advocate for it. And that's just one of the things I really wanna address. You can expect a lot more coming from us, there's some recommendations we'll be making fairly soon. And also, y'all really do need to check the police, they doing way too much.
Next speaker is David Andre, then Denisa Attiles and Dennis Hewlett. Mr. Andre? Doesn't appear, he's here. Um, Denisa Attiles, following Denisa is Dennis Hewlett, and then Stephonte Clark.
Hello, my name is Denessa Attilis, and I am the co-chair of the Sacramento ACLU. Alan presented the letter that I co-signed, and he also provided copies of the Constitution to each of you. And I would like to echo his sentiments and share some of my own opinions. Um, I'm gonna quote James Madison. He said, "For the people to rule wisely, they must be free to think and speak without fear of reprisal." James Madison was a founding father, he was a slaveholder, he was considered to be the primary writer of the Constitution, a document that intentionally excluded women, and even he still believed in the unrestricted free speech that is a founding principle of our nation. I'm gonna read an excerpt from an article, I'd be happy to share it with the council. "A free republic is one in which people are governed by laws that they themselves have a hand in making. From this perspective, freedom of speech needs to remain nearly absolute. Madison hoped to promote a robust intercourse of sentiments so that in due course, public opinion would cohere around principles of justice and the general welfare. Government had to move slowly and cautiously, but public discourse should be vigorous and unfettered. Public opinion," Madison wrote in the National Gazette in December seventeen ninety-one, "sets bounds to every government and is the real sovereign in every free one, but in a large republic such as the United States, it is less easy to be ascertained and less difficult to be counterfeited. It was thus, thus key," he argued, "to facilitate a general intercourse of sentiments. In Madison's view, a free republic depends ultimately upon public opinion. A constitution could divide power this way and that way, but in the end, it is the people and only the people who rule. And for the people to rule wisely, they have to be able to communicate with one another freely without fear of reprisal. Thus, freedom of speech and press were not for Madison merely God-given rights, they were preconditions for self-government. As Alan pointed out, the courts have repeatedly ruled on the prosa- supremacy of this ideal. So please adjust your council policies in accordance with our founding ideals. Thank you."
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Dennis Hewlett. Speaker is Dennis Hewlett, Stephonte Clark, then Keon Bliss.
Good evening, council. As I was listening to this framework for inclusive economic development, you guys were talking about metrics, and what I heard was, um, like, goals and research questions, but I didn't really hear one metric. So you might just wanna look at that. It was like, how will those things be measured? And if you don't define that, you're not gonna get anywhere. And then I wanted to comment, last week I came here and, uh, I think made a pretty decent case pointing out to you, while I think, why I thought the use of force policy, your use of force policy, as well as the foot pursuit policy, was violated in the killing of Daryl Richards. And I asked, I sent emails to most of you, and like the other people here, I haven't heard back from any of you, I haven't heard any government officials question whether those, uh, uh, policy was violated, and if so, either you agree with it, or you agree with me that it was violated, and tell me what you're gonna do about it, or you tell me you disagree. But I, I, I really think that that lack of communication is showing its face again. You know, does, do this, uh, Chief Hawn think that everything was okay? I got, I got the idea that the police think that that was all okay, and sending in a military SWAT team was the appropriate thing to do. And I, I disagree, and I wanna know what you guys think about it. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Stephonte Clark, then Keon Bliss, then T. Whitney.
Stephonte?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Shout out to Black Lives Matter, ACLU, hold it down. The people like what you said, sister.
Stephonte?
Okay, nah, I like what she said. Um, also, I wanna talk to Larry Carr, I wanna do something like how you did with the Jazz in the Park Festival type of thing, and so I wanna do it with a showcase of young talent out there in District Eight, because those kids out there in Coral Gables and all that, they all rappers, they need something to do. And, um, the way you set it up for those, um, concerts in the parks, for the older folks out there, I think, um, with the, the right performers, things can go cordial and smooth, just like how your event went. But I think the kids need something to do after the summer, you know, not just keep them busy during the summer, but keep them busy after the summer. That's why I'm stressing that resource center with you, Mr. Mayor. The Marshall School, you know, nobody's doing nothing with that. That building's open. C.P. Huntington, almost you know about that one? But that's another building that's open. And that can help with the homeless crisis too, if it's twenty-four hours, we need resources. My thing is resources and outreach into the urban community. So, um, if I can get your help with that Larry Carr, setting up getting a stage out there, I'll call you, alright? That's all. Alright.
Next speaker is Keon Bliss, then T. Whitney, then Oneetha.
Can't agree more with the speakers that came up before me. Every time I come to the City Council, I'm just constantly reminded of why I do what I do, why I'm out in the streets all the time and actively working towards systemic Y'all gave some really great talking points, especially you, Mr. Jennings. I really appreciated what you had to say. The sad fact of the matter is, is that your actions don't actually reflect your words, and that's really what we actually need to see in order to build trust. We don't need more flowery talk or gushing language about what we want to do, about our intentions. I can't read your minds, none of us can, and you can't read mine. All we can do is watch you and see what you actually do, and what you actually do doesn't actually reflect with those words that you're talking about. Just last week, you talked about council items that concerned the appropriation of over three-hundred-and-seventy-eight million dollars, and yet somehow, some way, out of all that money you have at your disposal, you can't find the funds to afford public toilets for tens of thousands of people that sit dying on your streets, who have no choice but to camp because they have absolutely nowhere to go, while you have a bunch of vacant buildings all around Sacramento that you're just waiting to sell out to your developer friends? What about SACPD? Killed a nineteen-year-old kid in somebody's backyard in Land Park, hunted him for five fucking hours, and somehow, some way, none of you seem fit to say anything about it, comment on it? Daryl Richards, say his name!
Daryl Richards!
Again, actions speak louder than words, and talk is really cheap.
Thank you, Mr. Bliss, your time is complete.
Don't tell me what you're gonna do, show me.
Thank you. Our next speaker is T. Whitney, then Flo Kofar. Ms. Whitney? Calling Ms. Whitney is Oneetha, then Flo Kofar.
Oneetha, by the way.
Oneetha, thank you.
Earlier, um, Eric used the expression cradle to career, and I'm just thinking, cradle to career, cradle to career, what's that mean when so many, particularly young black men in this community are not ever gonna live long enough to have a job, much less a career? Like, when are you gonna prioritize life over, um, economic development and success? You know, Daryl Richards was only nineteen years young when he was hunted by SACPD and gunned down by SWAT in cold blood. He will now, never celebrate his twentieth birthday. Stephon Clark was only twenty-two when horrifically murdered by SACPD in his grandparents' backyard for holding a cellphone. He will never celebrate turning twenty-three. And Brandon Smith, while voluntarily seeking help for a better life, was brutalized by probation and then literally neglected to death by SACPD at age thirty, he will never celebrate turning thirty-one. So last Tuesday, when I turned fifty-one, I was sitting there eating some gumbo that was made by a beloved and looking forward to some lemon birthday cake, and I'm thinking, who in the hell am I to be sitting here celebrating yet another year on this planet when so many of the black people that are in my life, that I love so much, that exist in this community, are at such extraordinary risk that they may not ever make it to their next birthday? And we have a long list of proving that's a real, that's a real concern. When we come here and we say Black Lives Matter, and yeah, sometimes people use profanity, but that's for good reason, there's tons of emotion behind it, whether you like it or not. Stop killing black people, fix the systemic racism in this community and in this country, and people will stop cursing.
Thank you, Ms. Whitney. Your next speaker is Oneetha, then Jamar Jefferson. Oneetha?
I'm gonna take a deep breath, cause it's taken me quite some time to work up enough courage to come up here. I should curse y'all out, cause that's really what you deserve, but I won't, because I know that you have popo here to take me out and harm me because of my words. You came to an event, Mayor Steinberg, where the focus was compassion. We need to have a serious discussion about that. You all, I don't believe that you understand what compassion means. Compassion to me is having to hear a mother's cries, is having to see the pain on the faces of family members, whose loved ones have been taken by state-sponsored terrorists, some of whom are sitting in this room right now. It's showing care and consideration for them. You walked out on one of those family members last time, Mayor Steinberg, and I'm calling attention to that. Daryl Richards' mother was in the audience. And y'all are ready to go out into the communities, especially and particularly where black and brown people reside or are trying- Um, and then I also would like to make a recommend, uh, a request of you that the, that there are two seats that are dedicated to affordable housing and homelessness, because I, I want to make sure that those issues are elevated and those voices are there. Um, you know, uh, Councilmember Jennings, you said, you know, every district wants to have a rep, and I agree with that, but you all make the ultimate decisions, so every district already has a representative in terms of making final decisions for the budget. What we want to make sure here is, is that we're elevating voices that are often left out, and that we want to make sure that they have a seat at the table. Um, and I also, then lastly, would like to charge that we interpret a bona fide taxpayer organization. I don't even know what that means, but that we interpret that as liberally as possible, because anybody who is a resident of this city is a taxpayer. And so therefore, any organizations that exist are bona fide taxpayer organizations. And so those are the charges that I would bring to you informally, that we can, um, that as you're thinking about who to appoint, that you consider those things. Thank you.
Happy to continue working with you both. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jamar Jefferson, then Ron, then Kim Marie West.
First of all, I want to thank the Creator, y'all, for allowing us all the breeze, so thank you, y'all. I want to share a scripture for today. Proverbs 22 and 2 says, "The rich and poor have this in common; the Creator is the maker of us all." Pay attention to that. "I am total opposition against measure you. Keep your hands out my pockets. I'm a father. My son has diapers and he loves going to Chuck E. Cheese. It's a gross unfairness of imposing the highest sales tax rate in the region on the city with the lowest per capita income in the region. Measure you is really a poverty tax, where unjustly punish the poor who lack the discretionary income to pay the additional 200 a year in higher taxes that measure you will cost them without sacrificing the necessities of life. Eight hundred a year for a family of four. With so much money siphoned off these days in crony deals with special interests, including wealthy developers, greedy billionaires, and political juicy city unions, this tax will be a gigantic cash transfer from the poor to the political rich. You don't need the money. If you only stop overspending our money and live within your means like we have to do." City revenues are soaring up to $120 million since the recession, a 35% increase. They've jumped 16% in just the past years alone. There, they, our Sacramento has identified 125 millions a year in savings opportunities if the city would just, if the city, and keep the city's core service is intact. This proposal will free up more money than measures you would raise in new taxes without inflicting pain or injuring on Sacramento's poor, homeless, seniors on fixed incomes, and modest-income families who are working hard, very hard every day to keep a roof over their heads and put clothes on their back and food on the table. Remember, we all got to meet our makeup. You don't take the money with you. This is not about showcasing. I've been to $12,000 myself. I'm going to go to $30,000. I'm out working. You're paying these people for nothing. Hard work, this.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson.
I'm leading the charge to defeat this. Keep your hand out my pocket.
Yes, sir.
Our next speaker is Ron, then Kim Marie West, and our final speaker is Jade Nicole. Is Ron here?
Yes, 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 thank you. Okay, let's start the clock. Uh, first of all, praise the Creator in several names. Uh, Mr. Hanson, I'm the son of a supervising engineer, Pacific Telephone, 1972, invented the pager. Seems you misspoke about tapping into underground water. My father didn't tell me to say this, but my father, the Creator, told me to tell you you misspoke. Underground water is based as a cushion for the plates that cause earthquakes in California. Don't tap into the underground water. The biggest user of water is not William Land Park, but the biggest user of water in Sacramento is the Sacramento County Jail. Each time that toilet flushes, it uses three gallons. There are inmates at times who want to flood out their sails. We're five years into a 30-year drought. Mr. Carr, get off your phone, I want to talk to you, young man. It seems that there are some young people going to the City of Trees Water Tower late at night, very disgruntled about water meters. When's the last time, like the Doobie Brothers, you took it to the street and talked to them young brothers out there? Seems like this man was, uh, shot and killed in your district? It seems like, did you, uh, hmm, all due respect, did you make it to the Burbank Festival to talk to the young people? I don't think so. Interesting, though. See, that's a cozy seat, but you can take it home. You can take it home. If you're too old to get out there and talk to them young people and help protect South Land Park and William Land Park, then we can find somebody or replace you. I helped Kevin get in there. His mother said, Ronnie, you're a big reason why Kevin made mayor. Yeah, because I campaigned from the Rooster Crow to the moon coming up. We can find somebody to replace you, bruh. Thank you.
Thank you. Your next speaker is Kim Marie West, and then Jade Nicole.
I want to first thank the council for an opportunity to speak. I'm glad that a topic was brought up a little vaguely about senior housing. I am a current recipient of almost being homeless. My husband recently died in January at age 67. I am an employee of the county of Sacramento for almost 30 years. My daughter is an honors graduate of McClatchy High School. She is now teaching in, in Shanghai, China, but she was almost, is the closest I've ever been in my life to literally being homeless. You need to do something about the homeless situation, because I'm 61. I never thought that I would be almost literally on the street. My husband had liver cancer. He worked all his life. We were married 30 years. You have to do something. And also, Mr. Harris, the toilet issue does need to be addressed. I have a friend that I went to visit at a horn not far from where those tents were. It's nowhere to use the bathroom. It's no lights. No one can go. If you need, if you need to go there, go there at night where you can really see what's going on. If you're not 60 now, or above, you will be. If taxes keep going up, if housing and rent control is not controlled, you'll be the next generation that's on the street. There are young people that have to come up. But I cannot comprehend in a city this size where the priorities keep changing and it seems to be farm to fork, a destination city, where there are people lying on the street. No one should have to be able not to use the bathroom. After a certain time, there are no bathrooms to go to. I, as a woman, personally, would want to be able to, but what about people that are sleeping in the sidewalk right now, that don't have a bathroom, that don't have a roof over their head, that don't know where their next meal is doing? You need to get out more in the community instead of staying in this office. You need to get out and do something.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Jade Nicole.
I heard loosely this evening the mention of homegrown talent. Not once did I hear Talent Magazine mentioned. We just celebrated our 10th year anniversary. In Sacramento, we've featured over 10,000 artists and 250,000 nationwide. One of the biggest challenges that I see in our arts community is if you're coming from the private sector, you don't have a place. Our arts community is being ran by nonprofits and city. And I also see a lot of our local artists that are being featured in mainstream Sacramento, it's the same ones over and over again. We're not seeing very many women of color being featured and talent with disabilities. For our creative economy to be successful, it has to be more inclusive of talent from all backgrounds. It can't be the same ones being promoted over and over again. Let me give you an example. In our gallery, we have two artists that are from the Latino community that have both been showcased at the Smithsonian. We had zero support for it. Sonia Fay has been a leader in the women's rights movement. She's been on covers with Gloria Aldred, Linda McCartney, Julia Childs. Sacramento won't pay attention to her. She had to leave Sacramento. And that's the norm for a lot of our local artists. They're being pushed out because of gentrification. Richard Herrera has been here his whole entire life. He's being faced with leaving the city because he can't afford to live in Oak Park anymore. He's an artist with autism. I would like to be included in some of the conversations with local talent. I have good relationships with the majority of them that aren't represented in Sacramento. They need to be able to earn a living from their community, but they're being pushed out for artists that are coming in from other metros.
Nicole?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, there's nothing more to come before the city council. We are adjourned.[1667.66][1667.66][applause][1668.66][1668.66][music][1669.66]